If everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would like to remind everyone of the norms of collaboration, which are pausing, paraphrasing, posing questions, putting ideas on the table, providing data, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive intentions. Sarah, if you could go ahead with roll call, please.
Okay. Brad Crandall.
Here.
Don Forten.
Here.
Sarah Jones here. Craig Corpola. Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. 1.05, addenda.
The school calendar is not on this one. We talked about that, adding it and voting on it and getting that approved. It was sent to us, so I'd like to move that to today. It's usually done in May.
Kevin, are you prepared to talk about the email you sent us with the...
School calendar, which was for the teachers.
The teachers' camp, yes.
Just like the first day of school, last day of school, just getting it approved and...
Yes. As a matter of fact, we should do that because it is... Oh, it's not voted today. It's just looking at what it is.
Yeah. You sent an email to everyone. Everyone has a copy of it. Should have a copy of it. I printed a hard copy just in case anybody...
I can send a copy to... Oh, I printed a copy.
Looks like we have hard copy.
I brought out his hard copy because I know he loves to see things.
And yes, and that way it can be a consent item when we get to next week. Or not next week, 28.
Twenty-eight.
Yes.
And then he sent the survey results. I didn't know if we wanted to discuss them at all or if we just wanted to look at it on their own or if we needed to discuss them at all.
Let's start with the first part. So that's a motion to add the school calendar as an agenda item for this evening. I will second that. Sarah, if you would take a...
Don?
Roll call.
Yes.
Sarah? Yes. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
3.05 for this evening will be discussion on the school calendar.
The next addenda I would bring up would be the survey results. I didn't know if anyone wanted to discuss those at all or if we just wanted to look those over ourselves that Kevin sent out tonight. Sorry, I don't have those printed out for you, Tim. Those were sent out today at 4:46. Do we want to review those at all as a board or do we just want to...
That is completely up with the board. I can say that July, we will be discussing return to learn and the committee, the whole, and board meeting. Just we want to give everyone plenty of notice, but at the same time, we need to stay on top of what Michigan regulations are...
I just didn't know if we wanted him to review it all with us out loud, just to kind of give a... if everyone understood them all. Just didn't know how everyone felt. So I just wanted to bring it up just in case anyone had any questions.
I think we could... Personally, I think we could address any questions between now and the committee, the whole by email to Kevin if we have any questions on those.
So is that like that you're making a motion to discuss that or just asking?
She can make a motion, absolutely.
I'm just, I was just...
I didn't know if anyone else wanted to add it to there. I'm okay reviewing if nobody wants us to review it. I just want people to feel like if they wanted to discuss it.
It might be helpful to catch Brad up to, you know, just to go over it and do it. I'm not opposing it or, you know, I'm just saying.
So do I need to make a motion to put it on?
If you would like to make a motion to add it, then...
To add it, just to review it for tonight, I would like to make a motion just to review them quickly.
And I'll second your motion.
Sarah, I'll say no. I'd rather wait. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion passes. 3.06 will be... discussion of return to learn. Survey results. All right. Anything else to add to this evening's meeting? I have one. Policy thirty three sixty two oh one I would like to bring up for discussion per advisement from Trune, our legal firm.
Does that demand?
I made a motion.
I'd second that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions or anything?
This is basically the first regret.
No.
This is already an approved.
This is already approved policy.
Yeah.
This will give the ability to discuss this policy.
Dana?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah, yes.
Three point oh seven will be discussion of policy thirty three sixty two point oh one. All right, anything else? Two point oh one, comments from the public. Do we have any public here this evening that would like to speak? Thank you. Moving right on, three point oh one, Middle School Panther Academy. Kevin has brought Mrs. Bruce.
Mrs. Bruce has a class that she is going to share that I am excited about, and I know the administrative team has been excited about, so we know our kids are going to be excited about it. So we want the board to know before it comes to parents, and they say, wow, did you know? Instead, we'd much rather the board knows now.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, President Wolfersberger and members of the board. So I'm coming to you tonight to just give an opportunity for questions and discussions about an adjusted class. This is not a new class. The sixth grade Panther Academy has existed for a while now, so we've made some adjustments to that course in an effort to offer some more exploratory options and elective options for our students at the middle school. So this class is going to be something that is a semester-long elective that goes over sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We, because it's going to be going to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders all at the same time, they'll all have the same class essentially the first year, but as we move forward, we'll build on that so that there's differentiation at each grade level, so it's not the same course. Do you want me to do something to fix that?
No.
The class really focuses on, some of these concepts have already been in sixth grade academy, and then what would be different is sixth grade academy has included some of that transition stuff from elementary students to middle school students, but we're going to be pushing those skills and strategies into our pride time classes, and so our sixth graders will still be getting that. We just don't need a full year of that. But our kids do need things like communication skills and leadership skills, personal finance, personal goal setting, all of those types of things, which is what the class will be made up. So if you go, if you flip to the next page, you can see the syllabus for the course. And I also just want to add that the implications of this for our master schedule will be that we'll be able to offer our electives at a semester-long elective instead of a year-long elective, which right now, kids have to choose oftentimes between, most of the time, they have to choose between art and computers, for example. Well, we want kids to be able to take a semester of art and a semester of computers if they want to, but our schedule wouldn't allow for that before. Students were kind of mandated, it's a strong word, but they were put into physical education as part of the schedule, which is a requirement for middle school students for one semester of their middle school time, which we're doing at eighth grade. We pair that up with health, which is a high school requirement. But we want to allow kids, I mean, if they want to take a PE class at sixth grade, we want to allow that to happen. If they want to take a second one at eighth grade, I would have done that. We want to allow for that to happen. So we're trying to offer some more opportunities so kids can have the, some choices, and I'd like to explore this a little bit more to learn about what I want to take in high school. I'd like to explore that a little bit more to start working on my career pathway, whatever that may be. So this is an option for us to do that. So I'll give you a moment to just look over the syllabus, and then I'm happy to take any questions or discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So before kids left for the year, they signed up for courses, so how would they get this added in?
Yeah. That's a really great question. So at the time, we weren't sure how we were going to reformat sixth grade academy. We were still working on, do we want to have that offered as part of the time and bring on this new course? We called it a life skills class, which we knew we didn't want to necessarily name it that. That, life skills is a very specific class that requires a specific certification, but we were just kind of working out, ironing things out. So what we did is we put that into the course request forms, and we talked to the kids about it. So Mrs. Carol and Mr. Simpson explained to the kids, right now, this is kind of a placeholder name for the course, and we're still ironing some things out, and gave them the gist of what it would be about. And so we do have a full schedule for this course of kids that selected it for next year.
I have a question. First of all, let me say, I love, when it says you know, study for participate in the kindness campaign. You know how much that means to me.
I do.
You do know how much that means to me, and I love that you are working so hard to change the culture in that building.
Thank you.
That means so much to me. Like, it touches my heart more than you know.
Thank you, Dana.
My question is, how does this affect other classes such as, say, two years of Spanish, or band, or art, or the health that they take that's a requirement? I'm just curious how that affects those classes.
Yeah, that's a great question. So by opening this up, what this actually does, it allows, so what we had to do, we made some reformatting across the board, like we're bringing math foundations back, which we have to do. I mean, if you look at our math data over the course of the past few years, we have to do this. We don't have a choice.
One hundred percent.
And so we're matching that up at the sixth and seventh grade level with our reading course, which is a supplemental reading class. So every sixth and seventh grader will have math foundations semester and a reading semester, both in sixth and seventh grade, to help provide that supplemental reading and math time for them and help prepare them going into eighth grade where the demands are stepped up quite a bit. And then that is a requirement at sixth and seventh grade. Spanish is an option at seventh grade. However, when we talk to our students about filling out their course request forms and what we sent home to parents, just help to understand that this is a choice, Spanish at seventh grade, but your child has this opportunity to meet the requirement, the graduation requirement for foreign language in middle school, which will be probably a lesser load, and, you know, a little bit more exploratory than content heavy than it would be at high school, and allow them to say, hey, I'd really like to pursue a foreign language in high school, and then be able to go more in depth when they get there, should that be their choice. So Spanish moves to a choice. Reading and math are an elective, one of the three. They're not really an elective. They're a mandate at sixth and seventh grade, but they fill the spot outside of our core classes. And then at eighth grade, that third elective time is filled with PE and health, that rotation. So every grade level then gets two choices of an elective, which was not the case before. Like before, seventh grade only had one choice of an elective, and we wanted to broaden that out.
Right. So, and I know that you have to have that help, and we take it in eighth grade here, so will that, will that help still be offered in eighth grade, or are we moving into the high school?
Oh, no, it's still an eighth grade, yes. It's still an eighth grade course.
So we just don't, I mean, I know that Mrs. Driscoll retired and everything, so we're just doing some moving in.
Yeah, we're doing some moving around. Like, we're looking at certification. We actually meet tomorrow to look at some district staffing. We're looking at certifications across the district and where we need different people and where the strongest skill sets should be, and making some decisions, you know, for more of a global perspective about staffing.
Okay.
I love it. I love your energy. I want to definitely thank you for that over this past year.
Thank you.
Your energy and that building is amazing.
It sure is.
I, I love it. I love it. I thank you for bringing this to us and being able to explain the ins and outs of it.
Any other questions or discussion? Well, we're looking forward to some great outcomes with this for our kids, particularly in the option of having that additional math and reading support, which was really put in the forefront. It was the priority for us making some changes with our elective schedule, and then to offer this more of an exploratory experience for our kids at the middle age. So thank you for your support.
And I'm assuming some of this would help out with catching up?
Oh, we sure. We are actually in the works of planning, like tomorrow I have a teacher work session with one of our teacher leaders all day, where we're looking at where are these gaps, we're looking at our test data, and I mean, we are already, we're one week out of school, and we're already working on our learning for the fall.
You guys are awesome.
To see where we're at, so, yes.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. That is awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
You can just put it right back in there?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is awesome. Three point oh two, resolution for Juul, per Trune. Kevin, if you would?
Yes, there's a class action lawsuit that is coming out of California against Juul for vaping and how the districts and the school systems are all getting with Trune law, which happens to be our law firm. And they're saying that there's no cost for the district because it's a class action, and that it's not going to be, we don't have the fine attorneys, but we do have to have the board do a resolution that says Kevin Simmons, the superintendent, is going to be the person interacting with this lawsuit when they come back with the actual answers, if it passes or not, meaning, not even if it passes. The attorneys were online at nine AM on Friday, and they were sharing with, six AM with the attorneys from California, that they expect this to go through. They haven't said how much each district would be getting or what the outcome is going to be. One of the questions the superintendents in the area asked was, well, with, can't they just file bankruptcy and say, hey, we don't have that kind of money to pay out? And they said, even if they do that, the company still has assets that they still would have to give those over. So it's pretty big with what's occurring, but Trune put together this resolution. I've got what I sent in the actual board docs. It's not all filled out because it has, the board has to say how many voted yay and nay or moving forward, but that can be done on Monday, the twenty eighth, because then that's when the vote occurs. But I want you to have the next couple of weeks to actually read through, because there's some, and the actual, I noticed that in some of the documents, they actually have words that are put together without a space, you know, like the and, and it's like, but that's what they sent to us, so every superintendent got the same thing. I'm sure there's a better copy that'll give me the next couple of weeks if there's a Word document to try to put the spaces in it, but I wanted to bring it to the board now because it's due back into the office August the thirty first. So instead of waiting until August to bring it to the board, we thought you'd take the opportunity and be able to read through the material. So it's not like we'd ask you to do anything tonight.
And one of the, one of the things that says in here is seeking reimbursement for vape, what's the word, what did it say?
Vape detectors.
Vape detectors? Yeah, those aren't really?
We didn't have any in our building, but they are some that have been used in bathrooms.
Is that the same as a smoke detector, or is it different?
It is, but it picks up vape. And there is a, there was discussion about it, and they said, yeah, even if you didn't have.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say. Like, I don't, I've never seen, like, any type of smoke detectors in our bathrooms.
It's a special piece, but there were some who got them because they were, not virtual, but in person all year, but then there's some district got it virtual, so they didn't get those yet.
All right.
So I think you're just about to touch on it. So if we didn't suffer a loss, can we even participate in the lawsuit if we're already hold?
Yeah, they told us to go ahead and participate. They said it's no cost, and that it's going to be for any Trune law clients, they're doing it for all of their clients. That's why their heading is on the top of all the documents.
Some stuff online about those, and, you know, they advertise to young people, huge young people for their advertisement. And, you know, even with not having the vape detectors, I can tell you guys, we had vape discipline issues that took up a ton of time.
We have so much vape homes. Do you remember the presentation that Margot came and gave?
Yes.
I was just in awe about that. It was about a year ago.
Yes.
It was over a year ago, it was before COVID. It was unbelievable that, that she was part of American Heart. I was just floored.
Yes.
Yeah, I've witnessed it in kids in school. It was huge when I was teaching in the middle school, and I've seen it in elementary kids as young as ten, so it's huge.
Like, I mean, it's.
It's that generation, yeah.
And they did market to kids, and so.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty readily available.
Yeah.
So most importantly, Trune stepping up for all of its school districts and trying to make Juul responsible and and help keep it out of the hands of minors in general. Any other questions pertaining to three point oh two? All right. Three point oh two will be moved to the twenty eighth board meeting for the, under the consent agenda. Three point oh three, policy revision for fifty six ten. Kevin?
Yes, last month we were trying to get Neola, who sends us the policies and say, this is kind of what nationally, how it's worded. There were, there was a situation that occurred in my first month here with kids during the summer that had a violation of policy, yet there was no policy addressing how to give out consequences. We had another situation occur over the weekend, and then we had another one that occurred late in the middle of the night. So the policy, Neola, when I asked them, I said, hey, do you have a policy that can address the fact that it's non-instructional hours? And what they told me is they didn't send anything back. They called and said, if you use policy fifty six ten, and that policy fifty six ten is about emergency removal, suspension, and expulsion of students. And they pointed to the second page, or should I say, under the first paragraph, factors to be considered before suspending or expelling a student. And under the second paragraph, it says, except as otherwise noted below with respect to possession of a firearm in a weapon-free school zone, if a suspension or expulsion of a student is considered, the board in or superintendent shall consider the following factors prior to making a determination of whether to suspend or expel: the student's age, student's disciplinary history, whether the student has a disability, but under D, the seriousness of the violation or behavior. They said you can add to that and when it occurred, and i.e. during school hours, at extracurricular events, non-instructional hours. And non-instructional hours would cover the summer, it would cover weekends, it would cover the middle of the night because it's not during the school.
But that, that just covers school property? Am I clear?
No, because we also have, if our students get into trouble at a basketball game at a different school, then we still are responsible for consequences for our students.
I understand that, but like, so like, but?
But it's a school-related event, not like they have a gun in their driveway.
Right, right. School-related, that's right, yes. School-related.
So the intent to modify?
So, the intent to modify this policy is to give school authority over discipline 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Especially when it's on school grounds or at a school event. That is the reason that it gives the explanation in 5610. Because we are talking about a revision, a possible revision, so that parents or students wouldn't assume that, well, yeah, that's, that's even during non-school hours. Instead, it's just spelling it out in the policy.
I would assume breaking into the school, out of school hours would be a no-no. I would don't.
Well, it's, yeah.
Yes, so, it is, it is not putting to where just assume that it's 24/7 and it's non-school hours. Because those comments I've made, even in long-term suspensions and conversations with students and parents, and they're like, well, where's the policy? Ah, what's the word? It's not even assumed. It is that if it occurs, that you just go, yeah, well, of course, it happened on school ground. But instead, we're talking about spelling it out that it's a part of.
When that situation occurred, I did look up and there is actually a policy that states something very close, I mean, that's, that allows the school to have discipline.
And, and you are correct. I can't remember exactly which policy it was.
I could look back if I did it, but yeah.
But I do.
But we also have one that says, and I think that was in the 1920 handbook, I'm not sure if it's actual policy. It says that anytime that school is not in session or it's not at a, you know, a school function, even in a way, that the grounds are to be considered public property since the taxpayers are paying the bill and rules, laws, and regulations of our society apply on those grounds. So, the law actually supersedes the school's authority when it's a non-instructional hour. So, if we did revise this, we're going to have to find that source, which I can find it.
We have a trespassing policy, no?
But that's just the law. You can't trespass. That doesn't give authority to the school to then add punishment to what the law already dictates.
And I, and I can find, because I took a screenshot of this, and it says, although schools are public facilities, the law does not allow the school to restrict access on school property. If a student has been removed, suspended, or expelled, student is allowed on school property without, uh,
Authorization.
The principal, sorry, it was fading. In addition, students may not trespass onto school property at unauthorized times or into areas of the school to determine inappropriate violations of this rule result in suspension or expulsion. Those kids should all have been suspended.
Was that, um?
That's in our handbook.
Is that policy or in the handbook?
It's in the handbook.
That's, that's what we're talking about, making the connection, is that the handbooks are supposed to be aligned to the district policy. And right now, district policies are not aligned.
It is contradictory.
Yes.
Yeah.
I did read it under the trespassing and the policies too.
I just think that that particular incident, we set a very, very bad taste in non-athletes' parents' mouths. It's been talked about. Athletes get away with everything.
I would encourage to continue on with the policy that we're discussing.
So that, the one reason why 5610 is written to say factors to be considered before suspending or expelling a student, the reason those were spelled out is because thereafter are restorative practices that are also a part of the policy, meaning that we need to take into account exactly, and it actually says in the policy about damages or about, it actually says on the next one, which was E, whether the violation of behavior committed by the student threatened the safety in or of safety of any student or staff member, whether restorative practices will be used to address the violation of behavior and whether a lesser intervention would properly address the violation of behavior. So, because those are A through G, that was one of the reasons that I mentioned after talking to the building principal, is that we have to have violations that meet, consequences that meet the violation. And that is a, it is a gray area, but we do want to err. If we're going to err, we err on the side of the child, if we're going to err.
I could even see where, if we did revise this, that we might add just simply intent. You know, the, the field is still ruled.
Yes.
Black kids hunt. There's a big difference of forgetting your shotgun in your trunk versus bringing one into the school. So, I think when you talk about firearms, you really have to, I think intent is huge. Do you intend to hurt somebody or did you just leave a box of shells in your car?
And there's four questions that point directly to what you just said. Even with a student that is wind hunting and he's going to PE class or his locker, he or she and the night falls out. And then that person is trying to go report it, but three other students have already gone to report it. And then these questions have to be asked. Instead of just saying, nope, you had it on campus, so you gotta go.
Correct, yeah.
You know, it's, it's 180 days expulsion. There's four questions that have to be asked and the threat assessment has to be done with the police department, you know, talking with the parents, talking with the student. So, you are correct. That is one of the things that's already in the policy also.
I, I can see that, man.
Yeah.
I, I see exactly what you're saying, but I can see just admit for clarity.
Yeah.
You know, just intent.
So, I guess the question is if we want to look at the wording for revising the policy or if the board is saying, don't revise it, leave it the same. But if we leave it the same, are we going to raise more questions based on non-instructional hours and the intent? That's, that's really the question, man. And if it is, it goes right there.
Um, so the question I would like to ask for the board, normally it is more or less my decision, but in this case, I'd like to ask you guys, our norm is a three-read on a policy. You don't have to three-read it. So, if anyone feels the concern of getting this policy into place as soon as possible, we will use tonight and then fortunately with the, the calendar schedule of our next board meeting, we'll have two weeks. If anybody has any input on any revisions or, or anything to it, we can put this policy on the agenda for the 28th. And go ahead and.
I have a question about, like, why it would fit into this section? Because these A through G seem like, like reasons that you would consider a lesser. So, why would, like, it occurred off of school property be a consideration for a lesser? To me, it would go in a different section where it would be like, this includes everywhere. It, it doesn't seem like it fits in that part of it.
So, it's got 5610, the way I understand it, the way Neola explained it. There's 5610, then there's 56.01, a 56.0, there's, there's other policies that are also worded from this policy.
Okay.
So, they mentioned it here because I mentioned, hey, if there is a reason for why you're suspending or not suspending based on non-instructional hours. And that's why he pointed to this area instead of use that area.
How would that block the responsibility? Like, let's say my child's at his friend's house and they get in a fistfight. And the next day, they come to school and everyone's talking about it. I mean, the way you're saying it, it sounds like the school could take some action on that.
It shouldn't be able to.
But that wouldn't be.
Well, and I, I think that is going to be more pertaining to the whole social media aspect and everything else that's going on right now. Uh, the, the bullying online, the, the, you know, the threats and stuff made online. That, yes, the school can take action of persons after hours, not even on school property.
If it's going to disrupt the educational environment, then we can take action. And again, those steps with informing parents and talking with the kids. But yeah, if it causes interruption to the educational environment, then yes, yes. That is the situation.
Yeah. So, again, I would ask, we can either use this for our first read. The board meeting on the 28th is our second read and then would be in the board meeting for July. If we go ahead with our normal three-read process. And if we did that, would we see a mock-up of the proposed revisions along the route, along the way? Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We'd bring it up for, if we do the three-read, we'll bring it back up for discussion at the committee of the whole for July. Agree on any revisions that we would like to make to it and then it would be the final presentation. See the final, right? Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to vote on it.
Okay. So, I will be taking what was discussed with the word intent going in and with actually putting it into the actual document and then putting it in green so you can see it, have it underlined, so you know this is what is proposed. And then after the second read, it might be, no, 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 that's not what we're looking for because there's some more discussion.
Yeah. And does that have something we should run by Trune or? And I was actually going to ask you, is this just conversation between you and Neola? Has this been sent to Ray yet?
Nope, hasn't been sent to Ray yet.
Can you do me a favor and send this to Ray?
Absolutely.
I've had a habit of, every policy's. And, and I, I do think if it's something, you know, that we end up revising or, even if we don't revise, we should find, you know, the, be it the handbook or the other policy that is in contradiction to, you know, this policy. We should probably take care of that before it's an issue.
In line.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, in all this discussion with Trune lately, it, it aligns with this particular discussion that you just brought up. I would be looking when we have, probably August, when we have some more time. Coincidence, we have, Trune is our law firm. Trune also has their own policies. Um, I will be bringing to the board to, to look to switch from our, our normal Neola policies that we use to use the, the law firm policy that we use. Align those and that way our, our attorney is, is also so. Again, I, I've ran every policy we've discussed all year through Ray. Have him go over it. I mean, that's, that's our legal team, so. And it makes sense to have our legal team intimately knowledgeable of our policies. Correct. So. Correct. I can't tell you how many times I call over there for a policy and it takes them some time to look up our particular policy and our wording of how we have it to where if we had our own law firm maintaining our policies. That might give them the contradictions right there. I think. I think, so, so yeah. So, let's, let's do that. It, it sounds like we're okay with a, with a three-read on this. So, we will use tonight as the first read. Uh, everyone has a copy. Everyone can view it. Any suggestions, throw Kevin's way. We'll come back in the committee of the whole in July. We'll, we'll go ahead and put it on the agenda for the committee of the whole of July. We'll bring those suggestions of altering it anyway.
It's July the 12th.
So, we're going to go ahead with a three-read, so there's no action, action to be made. We don't need to table it or anything, so. Um, so, that will be added to July the 12th. Committee of Whole meeting for second read. Alright. Moving right on, 3.04 2122 Budget Presentation. Kevin is.
A lot better than reading off a lot of policies. Kevin and Gina here to talk about budget.
We welcome our infamous Angela to present what she's been working so hard on.
It just went to sleep, didn't it? Who's tall and can reach down that?
Oh, it went to sleep?
Yeah.
Brett's pretty tall.
Need to turn that butt, push the.
The power?
Yeah. Yeah, just here's a pencil. Does this make you taller than?
Yeah, six inches. Oh.
Perfect.
Yay.
We need our six-foot-eight umpire that we had on Saturday.
Oh, my. Bet you didn't argue.
And he was a pitcher. He was a pitcher in college.
Okay, so today I have a bunch of, a bunch of things to present to you. Not only the 2122, but there's a final revision to the 2021 budget. There's also a food service budget, a student activity, student services budget, and a scholarship budget. I'm going to start with the general fund. That's the largest budget that we have. So, I'll start there and then we'll get into the, the smaller budgets after that. So, in board docs, you'll see there was a bunch of different attachments in here. Basically, what I had sent to you was, one of the documents was the full line, every line item, every account number that we have. If you so chose to go through and read the thousands of accounts we have, you, you are more than welcome to. Then what I do is I break it down in summary form. And that is this form. And this is, I'll get into this, the details of this, but this is what I'll ask you to approve on the 28th of June. And we're actually going to approve two different ones. We're going to approve a revision for 2021. And why we do that, just some of you are new to the budget process here and what we go through, but we have to revise that budget and we get it as close as possible. There still will be a variance and I'll discuss that at the end. It's kind of a game that finance people like to play with themselves, but I like to be within like 3% of that budget. So, when audit comes out and we get to the final numbers, like, I really watch that. It's, you know, just kind of like a pride thing for me. But my goal's within 3%. In the last few years, I've been within 1% to 1.5. So, we'll, we'll, we'll see with, COVID kind of throws a little bit of a wrench in, in things, like everything. So, we'll see how close that comes. But just to let you know that I still budget conservatively because it is a law that we are not allowed to go over budget and if we are, it's cited in our audit, which you'll see when that will be presented. But, so there is still some room in here as we have about a month of, even though the kids are gone in that, there's still stuff that possibly could be coming in that I didn't know that maybe slipped through the cracks. That still needs to be done, but also maintenance is still going on, transportation. We have summer school that's happening in the buildings. We have, technology is still working and stuff like that. So, there's still areas that things could still happen and change in that month. Then the other budget we'll get into is the 2122. And that budget preliminary, a lot of things we don't know, like student count. We don't know what the state's going to give us for a foundation increase. The state right now, the governor has a proposal out there. The House and the Senate all have a proposal, so they're all different. That'll come together in the conference committee and then they'll come up with a budget. That'll come together in the conference committee and then they'll come up with a budget. But they aren't there yet. And sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't even know that before school starts. Hopefully we will. I mean, I've had it go as far as into October, because that's their fiscal year, before we know what that is. And so we just kind of do our best guesstimate at this point. And again, with student count and, as you know, we've talked a lot about schools of choice in the past. And with the COVID year that we're coming off of, just that's a pretty, that's a number that could really be anybody's best guess where we're gonna, where we're gonna be with that. So we try to just, I'll go through the scenarios that I have put in here to, for your, for you guys to see. And then you can kind of direct which way that you want to go and which budget you'd like to approve. We will then come back again, probably, I mean, we can do it anytime. Usually it's like November, December, we have our count number in. And then we know what the state's gonna give us. And then we can come back and do a revision. I think this past year we did December, we've done November before. I've gone as far as February before for those revisions. So somewhere in there we can, then we kind of also know with staffing. There's staffing noise changes over the summer and, you know, if people might shift buildings or some teachers, you know, we have some openings and stuff like that. So there's just a lot of shifting and a lot of unknown at this, at this point.
I was just gonna say some unknown. So I'm assuming you're gonna touch on why we have an option one and option two?
Yes. Yep, yep, I sure am. So what I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to, I'm gonna jump to this document, which you have in there also. This is actually the end of it. And this, you'll see there's two thousand lines in this spreadsheet. This, if you, if I was to scroll up all the way through it, this is all of our accounts that we have in the district that are individual line items. And they're, they're put into these groups, which I, I do want to go back just for a second. Because I put a new document out there today, so I'm not sure if you've seen it today. But I met with Dana earlier today, we went over the budget and some of the stuff we went over. And she's like, oh, that'd be really great to have, you know, kind of like as a key or whatever. And I've never done that before, but I, I did like the suggestion, I think it will be helpful. So you might not have seen this, and I've never presented this before, this is the first time. So if you'll see, if I move back to, sorry for all the jump around. But if I move back here to the summary, you'll see these categories here where I have the revenue under the local sources, intermediate revenue and all of that stuff. So local sources here are like the revenues that we get from the taxpayers, from the township. These, these are the tax monies. These are grants that we get from PSF or some of the foundations. These would be any donations maybe that we might receive for something, library fines, poll fees, stuff that's local, you know, that you would get from like local places or local people. This intermediate revenue, this is money that we get from the ISD. So this, it'd be the specialized funding that we receive from them. We receive some career center, transportation reimbursement from them. If there was, sometimes there's grants that pass through the ISD. And maybe not even just CalHoneISD, but it could be other ISDs throughout the state. That would be in that category. Then of course, state sources, which is the bulk of where you could see we receive our funding. That's through our state aid. These federal sources is our Title One, Title Two, Title Four. These are federal grants, also with the COVID money that we've received and the stimulus and all that. Some of that money is in federal and some is in state. So it just kind of depends on how, when it comes out, how it's coded and where that would go. Those incoming transfers and other transactions. These are kind of like categories that don't necessarily fit up here. But one of the largest ones is indirect that we get from the food service fund. So that's for processing payroll and that's for Kevin and that's for the maintenance department. Because we don't direct charge any of those expenses to that fund for their services. So that's where that comes in. So that's the breakdown of the revenue. That's a little bit easier for me just to kind of explain to you in this. But the expense side, this is what we were going through. You'll see it has all these different categories. And these numbers mean something to me, mean a lot to me, how the code, I mean, stuff, these are the codes that, that we use. But like I said, after talking to Dana and kind of going through some of them, I realized that you might not necessarily know what's all under those codes. Even though this, this whole thing right here makes up our whole district. From the teachers to custodians, to technology, to business services, to transportation, the whole gamut. It makes up all of these. So what I did is I put this other document together today. And I just went through here so that these match. If you put these two side by side, you would see one ten basic programs. So what's in one ten basic programs? So that's all the general education. That's all the classes, elementary, middle school, secondary. That's where all the expenses fall under that category. The one twenty that add in needs, that's your special education at risk in Title One expenses. That's what falls under, under that category. Support services, that's another subsection. I was kind of just following the summary so you could compare it. So the, the two tens is under pupil. That one is your counselors, your nurses, your noon hour supervisors. That's where those categories fall under. And under your two twenty instructional support, that's your curriculum, the library, technology, and student services. You'll see technologies in a couple different areas. So technologies broke down between like the broad overview of technology and like the bigger, bigger things of technology. And then you'll see when we get down to the two eighties, there's another technology part. And those are like the technicians and the staff that are actually out working on it. And not saying, Tamen, not saying that you're not working on things. You're more of the broad, bigger picture than.
She handed him a pencil.
She just got even with me.
So, um, so that's where that technology and then student services. The two thirties, that's the board and the superintendent. And that's where those categories are. Two forty, school administration, so those are all the building administration. And graduation expense, which is kind of a weird one that, I mean, you know, graduation expense goes with that. But that's where that, that coding falls into. And the reason I put it out there is you'll see, especially because we've done some different things with graduation the last couple of years, our expenses have been a little bit more. I mean, we've had to adapt some things, doing the live streaming last year when we rented the tent and some different things. So there's just been some different, different expenses there. The two fifty is business support. So that's basically me and my team. And the payroll, accounts payable, the receptionist, myself. So just kind of like the actual business operations of the district. Two sixty, operation maintenance, which I don't think I need to explain that one. Same with two seventy with transportation. Two eighty is the central services and that's where we put that, talking about that technology tax. And also there's fees, C I S D, C I S D fees that we pay annually. That's RNC, pupil accounting, software support, stuff like that is under that, two eighty. Two ninety is athletics. Three hundred is community services, which we don't have as much, and you'll see when we go into the summary. That one, before and after school, when we had that before, that was the biggest part of that. But we don't really have much of that. And then the auditorium, anything that we would do in the auditorium would, could fall under that depending on what the, what we're having in there, like the community's using it.
And you know, if it's, what if it's being like rented, would that fall under that too as well?
If it's falling under that, we don't really track the expenses separately, more of the revenue. I mean, we more record the revenue separately than the expenses of the actual auditorium.
On the three hundred on the, on the general spreadsheet that you ran before this? In school year nineteen twenty, there's like a fifty seven thousand budget line, now we're down to six hundred. Is that the after school program?
Yeah, because we ran the after school program then, and now we're not running the after school program. Then this four hundred is capital outlay. So there's been some years that we've done some capital projects. One year we did a lighting project, I think that's on that summary. That's at thirty four thousand, I think that was on there. We did a, we redid LED lights. So that project goes, you know, in there. This last, last year we didn't, we were even barely in the building. So we didn't do any capital projects there. But once we do, and you'll see I have it projected out there when we talked about the air quality at the two elementaries doing that. So you'll see we put money back in that capital projects for that. And then outgoing transfers and other transactions, kind of like that. If it doesn't match those categories, it's kind of goes there. But one thing we do put there is this year we wrote off all the lunch balances about, I didn't go back, it was like around the end of January, maybe first of February, we just cleaned them off. And then we actually did get money from the state after the fact, we just found out to, to cover that also. But we were gonna write them off anyways, and that would be that other transaction. Because we actually had to transfer that money to food service to clear those account balances. So this is just a new document that I'm just showing you for today. But I, I think it'll definitely be helpful, especially if you go through and are looking at the summaries. And sometimes you're like, well, what really is under pupil? You know, I mean, where can I find somebody? These are the broad categories where you're gonna be able to find.
I'll just add that those numbers are used throughout the state in every district. So the program I D X that I use, I can compare other districts to our district in each one of those areas. Or look in past years how the numbers have changed. So those numbers are huge when it comes to federal and state reporting.
So before I jump to that summary page, I'm gonna go to the, this is our, this is the summary summary. This is the total of the summary. And then we'll go to the summary page where it kind of brings this information down a little bit. But you'll see in this R two, this is the, this year wrapping up. And this is what I'm projecting right now to end the year. So just shy of adding a million dollars to our fund balance. It's a good problem to have, but we also, as we move forward to next year, you'll see why we definitely needed this to happen. But again, this number, I, I propose this number will be even higher than what it is right now. As I just talked about being a little bit still conservative, I still had that month still to go, things could still come in. So there's still some areas, there's still a little bit of fluff in that budget in maintenance or in transportation, some of those areas that definitely could increase, increase this number. So this tells us right now, our fund balance is sitting, total fund balance is sitting at twenty nine and a half percent, which is very healthy. There's a lot of districts that would love to, to be sitting in our, in our situation with that. But now let's just move to the proposals for next year. So we talked about, I have two of them up here. So one of them, I did both of them with a two hundred and fifty dollar increase from the state. We have gotten all, the, the governor, the House and the Senate have, all have different amounts in there. So two fifty was the one that had the highest. That was one that had the highest amount at this point. But there was also a revenue consensus meeting in May that I listened to. And then I belong to the Michigan School Business Officials Group. And they all met after that, and then we get some more in-depth reporting. There's a lot of money right now at the state level and for schools. And as I told Kevin, this is probably the first year of me doing this. I've been doing this for twenty years. The first year that I've done this, that it's actually not been a doom and gloom meeting at this point. We just don't know how the money's gonna come though. The, they could earmark it very specific to something. They could give it to us in foundation allowance. There's been a talk where there's some districts throughout the state that their foundation allowance is very high. And then if you've ever heard the term of the two times the formula, they're trying to get these districts to come together more. Because there's, they're like this. And that, so they've talked about making everybody whole. Well, if that's the case, we're on this end, that would bring us up. So that would be a much greater increase than two hundred and fifty. But there's just a lot of speculation. And like I said, there is a lot of money right now. It's probably, it, it is the best year that I've heard. We just don't know what they're gonna do, do with those funds. So I'm pretty comfortable at keeping it at two fifty. I, I guess they could surprise me and it could be less coming out. But I think, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with keeping it there and we'll kind of see. Like I said, we'll do the revision and see what happens. The more, the number that I bring to you, two of them, and just not knowing, is the student count number. So this nineteen fifty six point seven one, so I had to tell Dana who our point seven one student was today. But what that is, is kids that go to the math science center or the career center.
We'll call Tyler.
She explained this to me today, that we don't get full coverage for math and science center kids or careers center kids. You only get fifty percent for those kids. And I didn't realize that. I thought, my kid comes here, I live here, the school gets all of my money. No, like this school only gets fifty percent for my kid. And like, I didn't realize that. I, I never do that, so. I, I mean, did you?
Yeah, I mean. So that's how, that's where, so you really see that in high school where you start to see, in all the other, um, grade, you usually see the head count and the F T E count match. But in high school, that's when you start to see that change with that. So this number that I did here, this would be taking our student count now. And then I actually reduced it by fifty because our senior class going out and our kindergarten class coming in, there's a big difference. There's about a fifty difference on that. So that's, this would be being extremely conservative at this point. Being that, and this is just what I showed, being that conservative in, I had put in there, go back here if you've seen that, the assumptions that I made. So the assumptions that I had made to come up with these total expenditures in this. We did a two percent salary increase for all staff. Teachers received steps. The teach, so they received two percent salary increase plus steps. There was a fifteen hundred dollar off schedule payment for teachers at the top of the scale. And how that works is last year, teachers received steps, but there was no percentage increase to the scale. So the teachers at the top of the scale, we gave a two percent off schedule payment to. So in order for them to receive an increase this year, we had to somehow make them whole for this year, plus be able to give them. So if we would've just gave them the two percent, they would've just stayed flat and got the same thing that they received last year. So that's why we went to the off schedule again. So basically, they are receiving a two percent increase. I adjusted benefits accordingly. That would be retirement changes, our health insurance, we are under the cap. So the state sets the cap rates that districts can pay for single, two person and full family. Anything outside of that cap rate, the employee picks up on that. So those adjust annually also. We do have two full-time nurses, so that's new. We had about one and a half maybe, one and a third last year. But that would be two, that would bring in a bolt on full-time on campus.
There you go, with a third of a person again.
This, this budget has one new bus added in there. It also has the two vans in the maintenance cargo van, which we approved at earlier. But that got moved to this year because we're not even gonna take possession until hopefully October, depending on what, what's going on. This would be, the high school sign out front needs some repair. And it's, Tammy had done some looking into that. And it's more cost effective to get a new sign than to continually repair these circuits out there that are, that are going out. So that, and that was kind of one we were, we were working on this year too, but with the timing of everything and getting it in, it's, it's moved to next year. And I already talked about the foundational allowance and the student count. And then this budget also added one daytime custodian for each building. So this year, we had more, we had one at the elementary schools. We had, we tried to have two at middle school, D M E B and high school for COVID, for cleaning, for all that stuff. So as we know that things are lessening, the restrictions are lessening some. But we also know that COVID probably isn't gone. But we also know that COVID probably isn't gone, you know, that we're not gonna not see it anymore. So for, at least for the six months, we renewed a six-month contract with High Tech. We did add in one daytime custodian to each of those buildings. And then I think we're just gonna assess it and see how that goes. If, if it was needed, you know, if it was beneficial, but it's something we wanna try to have all the time. Pre-COVID, we had one day porter from High Tech that was basically would run around to the five buildings as needed. So if there was a spill, you know, something big, not just like a little spill, but like maybe somebody, a kid is getting sick in the hallway or something like that, he would go to North Penn to do that. Then say there's something, it's real slow, he comes in the school. So all day, he kinda just rotated around to where there was a need, cuz there wasn't people in the buildings during the day.
So is the one custodian in each building for six months equivalent to having two when they're at the middle school and the high school and one at the elementary? Was every time a child went to the bathroom, custodian went in and cleaned right behind him at every store? So it was all the time. So now, think of it more of, there would be a cleaning of the whole bathroom, but it won't be every time, it may be every two hours, every three hours, or when the kids are at recess. But we're still looking for that cleanliness type of cleaning. And that's for the six months until we start seeing again if the restrictions are lifted and the percentage of positivity goes down and continues to drop.
One of the questions I had after I left the meeting, you said it goes through December. Is there a time that, you know, like we would say, like, do they, they need a sixty-day before that says to be renewed, that contract renewal, or?
Very good question, because we did an RFP, we started with transportation today. The custodian RFP started today also. So in July, the RFPs, July the twelfth, we're bringing RFPs to the board to actually look at and start deciding if they want to make a change with High Tech in another company. Or stay with High Tech, with the transportation department or the other two companies that came in. So they're gonna be here, even though you're gonna get those RFPs to be able to look at and discuss and have that conversation about, is it just about money? Or is it more about systems and how we're going to improve upon picking our kids up and transferring them back to board in a safe manner and consistently? So that's what's coming July the twelfth.
And then I said one other question too, on the two nurses. Like I know that it was always just one nurse and she kinda rotated through the buildings. And now you said this year it was like maybe one and a quarter. And just, can you just explain the span a little bit, why, where, where the need came from? Just why we decided to go with two nurses, is that we're really having?
I think, well, in the past, the nurse, our nurse that we've had, he's always asked for more nursing, you know, care and stuff like that, and we've never gone that route. Then with COVID, that's where we ended up with the one and a third, one and a half. And now still, we're just, it's still so, like, what's next year gonna be like? You know, are we really going back to normal, what we considered normal prior or not? But also even with that being the case, I have heard that in some of the elementary buildings, they have some kids that like are diabetic, that are needing help, you know, with that type of stuff. So there is more of a need that they're saying that a nurse actually being in that building is helping to do that. So they came up with a schedule themselves between how they were gonna rotate those, those days around.
And the districts in the research shows that one nurse brought three hundred and fifty kids. So we're way below that.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
But adding two is really going to be a lot more helpful.
Yep.
I got a simple question on the buses and vans. And so when we voted on them, they were already allocated in the twenty twenty-one budget, right? Since it got moved to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, did that money that we had voted on, is that part of that nine hundred thousand surplus?
Yes, yep. That's what this, that's what makes up some of this now, but that's what makes up some of this.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so, so those were the, those were the scenarios that I used to build this budget. So the expenditures I have totally the same between both of these budgets. Only thing that changes is the revenue based on the student count. You'll see if we only have the nineteen fifty-six, it's a two point six million dollar deficit into the fund balance for all of that that I just said to you to happen. And it keeps the staffing levels and everything as we've had it now the same. Supply levels, staffing levels, everything like that is the same. If we get the twenty fifty, and the twenty fifty came, I mean, we're highly optimistic. We, we'd like to see it here. Realistically, it's probably gonna be somewhere in the middle. So we kinda talked, I know Trevor and Kevin had had some conversations about what this number should be. And really, right now, it's kinda just like, uh, there. You know, it's, it really is kinda just guessing and trying to use the past, you know, the ins and outs of the kindergarten and the seniors. You know, if you could kinda tell, our registration date isn't until August. But that's how, that's how important those student count numbers play to, to our budget though. So, and this is where I would ask the board, which one of these you would wanna pass? You know, it, it, it's gonna be revised, it's still gonna be what it's gonna be. It's what we want to, you know, hope for in, this is being conservative. This is being a little bit more optimistic than, than this one.
So even our optimistic is we'll have one point eight million deficit?
Right, yes.
It's not sloppy, listening.
Yeah.
That's the first, so basically your summary here is coming to raise our budget four and a half million dollars?
Two point.
No.
Total expenditures in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two million.
Oh, yes, between here and here, yes. So and that's what all of these things that I just told you. But remember, in nineteen, in twenty twenty-one, our secondary buildings were closed half a year. Our, so like the utilities, the electricity, stuff like that, and the transportation, that was a big one too. We didn't, didn't transport all those kids. So there was a lot that happened in twenty twenty-one. And even if you look back like at that nineteen twenty actual, when I was doing, but that's the thing. It's like, it's almost getting so far now cuz we were closed here too. We, it was so unknown here, so we're here. I mean, you almost have to look back three years, like when you're looking at utilities and stuff like that. But those rates change so much, it's hard to come to that, you know, what that really, like, looking at a trend, what that trend looks like.
So my wife does our financing, so, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the obvious of your total revenue and your total expenditures, the revenue needs to be higher than the expenditures. Okay? So are we just kinda crossing this off as our head count? We hope that it gets back up to increase our revenue backup?
And that's what we're, yep, and that's, that's what we're, that's what we're talking, right. That's what we're talking about today. And that's, I had went over this with Dana earlier too, is that there's so many unknowns right now though. We don't know what head counts could be. We don't even know what the state's gonna give us yet. You know, there's a lot of money out there, there's, you know, there's been years when they're like, no, it's, you know, be lucky if you're gonna stay flat, there might be a proration. That's not the talk here, so I think there's gonna be more. So your option is you could say to Kevin and I, no, we don't like this. I wanna approve a budget that's even, which you'll see in most history, most budgets aren't approved at even, cuz there's so much of a variance knowing in June of what's gonna be. But you could say, I'll approve a budget at a million dollar deficit. That's what I'm comfortable as a board doing. And then Kevin and I would go back and we'll figure out how to get you a budget with a million dollar deficit there for you to approve.
So again, obviously, the, the benefit is we're carrying over six point, almost six million?
Right. So let me talk about this. So this is our fund balance, this is what I'm projecting our fund balance to be at the end of the year. This is what it would be under these scenarios.
And that's not counting the actual number of students as much as it is an estimate, it's an estimate. So by the time we get to November, December, we have to revise it and bring it to a balance regardless. So even if it's the first option or the second option, we're gonna be back in November, December after student count, and we still have to balance those numbers. And by that time, which I was gonna mention earlier, the communication I'm getting from the superintendents and from what's coming out of Lansing, they have a House bill that they're going through to say, we don't have to have our budget by July the first, but we have to have it by October first. So we still wouldn't know all the, there's two billion, over two billion that they have in revenue from the state. And they're saying, the governor and the house and the senate, they're negotiating all those things that, and Gina was talking about. So to do something different from either one of those options, it will still impact the staffing. And you don't know if we're gonna get those students back. And then all of a sudden, we just change something and it impacts the staffing. So that's why, as Angela said, we're here to ask the board, which one of these options do you want to go with?
Quick question, not having a historical perspective on any of this, being new. Is that strictly almost based on head count for all the revenue?
The revenue, basically. I mean, that's the majority of it. There are some federal grants that come in, and that's when I went.
But she's looking, about every sixty kids approximately next year will be about a half a million dollars. Every sixty kids is a half a million. That's how you have to basically think about it.
So if we look up here at this revenue, this is the breakdown of the revenue. You'll see the state sources is eighteen point eight million to where the rest of this is this federal. Those are like grants. And then when we have the grants, the revenue coming in matches the expenses. I mean, they're restricted, they're for specific areas, so that never, like if you get some federal money in, that never can help your bottom line as far as like your fund balance, because those revenues and those expenses always have to match moving forward. But yeah, you'll see, this is your state revenue. And your state revenue, the large portion of that is driven by your student, by your head count and your foundation allowance.
So our head count is down how many this year from last year or the pre-twenty nineteen?
Two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, two fifty.
Close, yep.
Where are those kids going?
Yeah, and that's the same thing they have across the state in a number of districts. There are some virtual, virtual schools that picked up students because of the whole COVID situation. There are some private schools, Catholic schools, parochial schools that picked up some kids. The question is if they're coming back. And if they're not, because there was a whole push, I was in the, the new normal group with the superintendent of the state. And we're talking with superintendents across the state, some eight or nine of them, to say exactly where are the students? And then there was a campaign that went out saying, listen, we need to find the kids, we need to find the kids. That's another reason they're talking about pushing this, like, one point seven billion of that two billion into education, and they're talking about over the next two years. Well, that's what they're negotiating, because there was a decline in student enrollment, and they don't expect for it to bounce back anytime soon. As a matter of fact, middle cities, there's middle cities projections that showed, how many kids were we supposed to drop over the next?
It was a, but I don't remember the specifics of that, but it was declining for the next five years. And I think that's basically also just from the census. I don't know how many kids are there to even be coming into kindergarten, you know, and moving through, through like that. I know.
There's a lot of homeschooling going on.
That's what I was gonna say, a lot of the kids because of COVID, I've known of a lot of families that homeschooled this year.
A lot of kids sent their kids to like country schools too. Like I, I know Bellevue picked a lot of our kids, KIMEX did, Athens picked a lot of our kids, because they're in person, five days a week.
Has there been any talk of marketing to get these kids back? Based on whether we have participation of our schools again, or?
After July the first, when the restrictions are dropped and kids won't have to wear a mask and, there's going to be a huge PR that's gonna be pushed out, videos, communications. We're open, you know, we're gonna be coming back. And we've already kinda said that now, five days a week. We've kinda said that now. But we wanna be able to say with no mask and everything else, but they're waiting for that July the first.
And we have advertising, we have, we have families that are applying for school of choice and stuff like that. So we have an advertisement out, it's been out in the newsletter, it's been out in our, like, Facebook publications the buildings have put out, and there have been some families that have registered at this point. But yeah, I think it's a bigger push towards the middle, towards the end of summer. Like, oh, let's figure out where we're, you know, gonna go to school, or we're gonna make a change, or stuff like that. So definitely, we're hoping for, for greater enrollment.
So you've been doing it twenty years, you've been in it thirty years. I mean, best case scenario is one point eight deficit. Does that scare you guys?
Yes. Oh, maybe I have.
I expected you to say yes.
So the, so the good part that I'm seeing from it is, one, there, we conserved a lot this past year. So we have a huge amount, very higher than normal, taking over. So the fingers crossed uncertainty of what we're getting into, we're uncertain yet on the virtual schooling that we may or may not offer and so forth. So, I mean, I get it, right now, we're trying to keep as many of our current staff members that have, God bless them, helped us out over this year, keep them still employed. So, I mean, I understand that. I guess I would, I would kinda go on the side of caution as well and go with the lesser
I guess.
head count and start to get us back on where we need to be.
Right.
If that's gonna end up being the trend.
That makes sense if we get more, we get a better head count.
Right. Can we get to review this again in five months? So if, for whatever reason, our head count goes.
Do you know where this page is?
Yep, I know. So what I would say to kinda answer your question a little bit more in depth than just yes.
No, that was good.
In November, in November, when I bring this to you in November or December, if it still looked like that, then yes. Today, probably not so much, because I know of the talk of the money at the state. That's, that's why I don't, I don't think it would be in our best judgment to go and make cuts. And especially because usually if you're gonna make deep cuts, you have to hit staff somewhere, because the staff makes up eighty-five percent of the budget. That, that's pretty much what the, what our budget is. So at that point, if we're gonna make some deep cuts, it would hit staff somewhere. I'm not comfortable cutting staff today with so many unknowns about this. The, the other thing with this, do you have a question?
More of a statement.
Okay.
So some of the unknowns that, that we were disc, or kinda touching on too, is, question had been asked about school of choice. The proposal or the idea is to even out that across the state. So head count would matter more than anything. So like right now, we, what do, do we get anything for school of choice?
Yeah, we get eight thousand one hundred and eleven dollars for every student, whether they're school of choice or our resident student.
And then as far as the, the property taxes and so on and so forth, that would get dispersed evenly through the state.
It's not right now though.
It's a talk. So yes, it's all.
He doesn't have something to say about that. And someone's like, oh, this is German, damn. I got news.
It's all, it's all, it's all hypothetical, but obviously we have, you know, counties and, and districts that are, taxes are a lot higher.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna say, cuz I, I mean, I, I talked to a friend who's on the board over there, and their student ratio, they get over twelve thousand per student. And I was like, you get what?
Yes.
They get a lot more per student, and they expect that.
Just on the line of staff and not wanting to cut that out, are we considering, like, if our count is lower, still keeping staff to keep class sizes down, numbers?
That, yeah, that would be like a common conversation.
That's, that's, we're talking about for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that we continue and it'd be a low count.
Yeah.
But when we get into January and February, we'll be coming back to the board talking about what this cut's gonna have to look like, so that staff and everybody has an understanding before we get to June of next year. So it's a, it's a, we saved, we took those savings, so we can weather the storm to get through. We may not even be weathering. We may not even be weathering the storm.
Correct.
Cause if they say, as we say, it's over two billion, they're not going to say, they might say, yeah, we're gonna close the gap, or they might say, no, we're just gonna give you a big old cut. Or they're gonna give it, but there's gonna be strings attached.
Yeah.
And so the expectation is what type of strings are attached. But that gap is going to close more so to where the fund balance is gonna come back.
Yeah.
And it's gonna come back to somewhere between twenty-six and thirty.
But again, as a temporary solution.
As a temporary.
I mean, it's, yes, it'll help us weather the storm as you, as you mentioned through twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yes.
But the uncertainties, I, I think that we don't know is going to be headcount, is going to be, you know.
It's headcount.
Just what, why, why is it, you know, less or more, is it population?
And or the actual dollar amount coming from.
Yeah, for sure.
Coming from the state. I mean, two hundred, even the two hundred and fifty projected per pupil is a good chunk of change.
I'd say that budget too. I do budget conservatively, but in the maintenance area, in the transportation area, those are beefed up though for if there's something that happened. I mean, those are the two areas that I see the greatest savings when I do my R two budget and where we came up with like that nine hundred, not all that nine hundred came from there, but some of it, some of it did, like diesel prices. So like I'll project that up and we might, we've had really good diesel prices lately. Well, a few years ago, we had really high diesel prices. So, you know, that kind of fluctuates. Same with utilities, those are another one that we had a lot of savings this year on utilities just for having the building shut down. To where, you know, our electricity right now is increased, you know, they've increased the rates for the summer. Now, it shouldn't affect us that much, but we still are and everybody, all the buildings are still, people are in them, they're being cleaned. Like central office is working, technology's working, maintenance is working. I mean, so there is still is electricity still running in the buildings. Also with that is like supplies for transportation and maintenance. So those are beefed right back up there. So there's potential for, I say every day, every budget I had, there's always been a savings in there. Now, could there be something that there isn't? Could we like, you know, blow, blow a boiler and then we're like, no, we're gonna have to go into.
Hey, 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 watch out.
Yeah, knock on wood.
They kept it out later when we were on shift.
So that's, that's where, it's very conservative, that's just what I wanna say. You know, this is like, this is like worst case scenario with the projections that I, that I've given, that I've given to you. Now, the one thing in the what Kevin just mentioned and Dawn probably remembers conversations about this, but I think he might be the only one, Dawn, that has been through a conversation about that. Maybe Jeff, were you in our last budget revision? You might have been on the board.
November, December, yeah.
Yeah, I think you might have just been on the board. But this, you'll see I have two other percentages down here. This percentage is total fund balance percentage and this is the fund balance divided by the total expenditures to come up with that percentage of what we have in the bank. This is unassigned. So as you can see, there's categories here. So this unassigned, this fifty-nine thousand, that number right there is basically inventory that we had at the end of nineteen twenty that we put on the balance sheet that we, that will be moved into the twenty twenty-one year. So that's stuff that we've already paid for in expense, but we took it out of the expenses of the current year because we didn't use it. So it has to go back yet. So we already know that money's earmarked, it's already been spent, it's already been taken care of. We can't use that for anything else. This one point seven million that we have in assigned fund balance, this is for capital projects. So over the course of time, we've had money in there, we've taken money out, we've added money to it. You know, we did the baseball, softball, that was when we did that. We did, done that, the office renovations, so safety measure that. We've done lights throughout the buildings. We did some parking lot maintenance at the elementary school. So those types of projects have come out of here. When we had, back here, this is nineteen twenty, when we had, you'll see in nineteen twenty, we added a little over eight hundred thousand to our fund balance. We decided at that point that we were going to beef up some of the capital projects, a bucket to have there for moving forward. So looking at this, and I just did this and I was, I talked to Kevin about it and wanted to bring to you because this can definitely be changed. There's a lot of talk about this unassigned in the previous boards. They have wanted this unassigned between fifteen and seventeen percent and seventeen percent is really where they liked that. For the mere fact that left us really good cash flow that we wouldn't have to borrow money. A lot of districts borrow money in the summer. Our student, we don't receive student aid in the month of September. So we're like full force back in school, running, you know, everything's going, but we're not receiving any state aid yet until October because that's the state's fiscal year start. So that, having that fund or having that percentage of fund balance has allowed us to not have to borrow. So with the way that this looked and this looked, I went, I went back and took this back down, this one million, almost one point one million was what we were holding it at prior to making this adjustment. I can move it back to the one point seven. What that will do, it doesn't change this bottom line, but it changes this unassigned number, it's gonna make it lower. So I can go ahead and do that. That would be, that's a decision for the board, whether you want it locked at this one point seven. It's really kind of just a shuffle of, you know, if we wanna keep one point seven, we're gonna do the, you know, we're potentially going out for the bond, we're talking about that, we're, you know, hopefully that would pass and we'll get some projects done and, you know, maybe we'd be okay at the one million. Also, we've never, as long as I've been in the system, we've never said, oh, we're gonna go use all the assigned for capital projects all at one time and just utilize it up to where it's down to zero. So that's never really been the, the way that we've gone here. So I guess I would just ask, do you want this put back up to this one point seven? Or are you comfortable with having this be maybe even just add a million just for ease of, of a number sake? Are you okay with this just being a million for capital projects and the rest goes into unassigned? And, or maybe we just leave it here until we know in November what our numbers really look like? And then if this needs some help, then maybe that's when we can help it out. I mean, we're not doing any big projects over the summer that's gonna, that we have to know today what this fund, this assigned figure is. But it was just something to bring to the board and to ask. And I don't know, Dawn, if you have anything you wanted to share about those percentages or not from the past?
Well, I just feel like we've always taken pride at Penfield for our budget and Gina, you're amazing. And our boards, our, the, our past board members were very diligent. So, and I think our community is a very conservative, conservative community overall. So I just think that we all need to consider that when we're deciding how we wanna go with it.
I think it's pretty much trying to change any numbers right now. I mean, we don't know for both ends.
Well, and I mean, honestly, the bottom line is the general funds. I mean, everything else is, everything else is the same. So it's gonna just depend on student count. And then, you know, this is a, a summary to basically get us to November where I think we can get to the nitty gritty and see if there's any changes that need to be made at that time.
This allows us to move from July first till we come in November, December to operate under the assumptions that I've given you. We'll move forward under those assumptions and then come November, December, say, something really happened, they were really looking at two point six or one point eight. At that point, like I just mentioned, I'd probably come to you and be like, okay, we, we really need to do something and if we don't, it's really gonna be bad next year.
We appreciate that.
And that was gonna be one of my questions. So whatever we decide is to make sure we don't have to borrow the money during that time.
And we won't this year for sure. Anyway, like I said, we don't have any big capital projects that are going. So we still have it in the bank, even though that it's earmarked out for something, you know, for that, but it's still in our cash flow. I mean, we still can, it still allows us to not have to borrow from those purposes.
So one thing I didn't notice was a spike in any certain column for our Esser funds.
Yep, so that is right here. So this is the zero, it was zero this year and then this is that two point four million of the Esser.
So you're gonna carry it into twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah, because we actually haven't received it yet. It's actually gonna be given to us from the state in twenty-one, twenty-two. And so this is, it's on the revenue tied up at the top and then it's here too, in this capital outlay for both of those.
Okay.
Then these are, just going back to like that first sheet I told you about the different categories. So this is what is budgeted in each of these, each of those categories.
How do we, and it's not really, I guess it is bottom line, but not bottom line. How do we put a number on what the band needs and the choir needs and the football? Do they, do the coaches and the instructors, do they fill out acquisition forms? Is it historical?
It's, we've gone historical in the past. So, but also historical, but then also if there's been a need, say something's come up and somebody has wanted something or I'll use the band, maybe they might need some bigger instruments that the, that the school provides or something like that. Then Blake can come to Kevin and say, hey, we really need, I don't even know what it would be.
Black tubes.
We, yeah, we really need the tubes and we're blah, 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 this is how much they are. And then that's where we just have dialogue and conversation about that. And then if it fits into the budget, if it's something that yes, yes, we need, you know, or whatever, then we add that in. We've done that in the past. Same with athletics. The only difference with that, that does change, there is a uniform list of when new uniforms recycle through and stuff. So Brett does give me that annually and I do make those adjustments annually. But again, he also gave us a list of needs in the athletic. And at this point, with this budget, we were on hold at the moment, but that's something where it's just a dialogue, it's just a kind of, they can come and have that conversation with Kevin and be like, hey, this is where, or like band and choir, they might go to their principal of the building to say, hey, this is what we'd like to do or something new or whatever, and then the principal could take that to kind of.
Can I ask if there has been any requests in the past, say, three months?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a fifty-three thousand.
That had a list of things on it.
Only athletics.
Yeah, the volleyball nets are not gonna make it to the summer.
Not banned, not banned.
The volleyball nets will not make it to the summer.
Not banned, choir has not had any requests.
Right, are you asking?
Yeah.
Has there been any requests in the past, say, three months? From any, we'll call it division, athletics, music?
Yes.
And has that been?
And we have placed inside of that some of those needs. I was sharing with Dana earlier, the budget is not just supposed to support the academic needs of our students. It should be used for the social, emotional and the needs that a child has. So we're, we have a situation where we're talking about the food earlier, the lunch.
The free and reduced lunch.
The free and reduced, that we shouldn't be sitting around going, oh, we're gonna save about three thousand dollars and so what? So we'll just give some time to pay it. If we know they're struggling, then why are we sitting here talking about three thousand dollars out of a twenty-two million dollar budget? Then let's go ahead and take care of that and it was like twenty-seven hundred at the time. And then we turned around and found out, well, they're getting the money back because the state came up with some grant to, to get the money back. So that is a part of the dialogue that should occur with the athletic director, the band director, the choir, that when there's a need, it shouldn't be, yeah, well, it's not in the budget. There's a conversation that needs to be had that we don't have our students out there feeling like they're less than when we have funds to try to take care of now. And Gina's not gonna let me just open up the pocketbook and just buy everything.
Cause he likes to do that.
But we can take care of our kids.
No, we're not. We're not gonna let you do.
Yeah.
But we can take care of our kids. That's what the budget is supposed to be for.
That was one of the conversations that Kevin and I had a discussion about, like, was a little bit, we felt, we felt that the way that we were almost use, I don't wanna use the word begging, but begging for money to even buy a track, for a track to get it last year, Kevin was like, absolutely not, we should pay that. And I was telling him like, the volleyball nets, after confirmation, will not last you the summer. They are broken, they will not last for summer. We will not be able to host at home volleyball games if we do not get new volleyball nets. So that's been brought to the attention and I was talking about with Kevin today about it. Like, these are things that to run an athletic program, like we need to get these things taken care of. And these are, these are not stuff that our girls need to be running around collecting bottles all over town and like washing cars. These are stuff that, as a school district, we just need to handle.
Fundraisers are for the.
Trying to get to that point of making sure that we are handling it, here's our time to handle it.
Yeah.
You know, is there an abundance of, we're using athletics as a general? Is there abundance of, of athletic requests to where we need to, or have you guys already adjusted the athletics to accommodate?
Nothing big. So we did for uniforms at this point, looking at the budget. So the uniform schedule that Brett had, we did, that is accounted for in the budget. But none of the bigger things, most of it was gonna be covered potentially by the bonds.
Yes.
Most of it. But then the volleyball nets was the one, I think that was like seventeen thousand. That was not in there and there was, I noticed one that was.
The board for tennis, the board was.
Was that the other one?
Yeah, it's like.
Oh, no, the resurfacing.
We talked about.
But I thought that was gonna be also part of the bond.
Proposed in the bond.
Yeah, right, yes, right. So I thought that was gonna be in there too. So really the big thing on that list that we've seen, now, I'm sure there's other things, but on the list that we were giving, given was probably that volleyball net for big, a big team.
And I did ask Kevin, well, how he felt about pay to play.
Yeah.
Because we did it for years. We've done it, we've done it for eight hundred years and then we took it out two years ago.
And then I mentioned the fact that it would come between some twenty-eight to thirty thousand. And then I mentioned, and I think I mentioned the.
The casino.
The firekeepers, they have about that much that they send this way. So there would have been a balance on the budget to where we're going, okay, then why are we asking the kids to do that? Well, then I understood that it was, well, if, but if the kids need this, why can't we have it for them? And I said, the district should be paying for certain things. And, and I gave it a couple of examples, not to be long-winded. One example was the landing mat.
Yeah.
For, for the high.
Home pit, yeah.
Right? Then it was, you hit it and it was in crumbles. But the track program, the coaches and the kids are gonna go out and do fundraiser to buy a new mat. And I said, wait, what? Why do they have to go out to, we have that equipment that we could go ahead and just pay for. So I told Brett, he went ahead and put it in, so we got the mat. As I explained, fundraisers are when you want the extra stuff for kids. If they wanna get an extra T-shirt or an extra, you know, something, that's extra. And that's where athletic boosters would come in. Well, PSEF was another one. When I first sat down in two thousand nineteen, and then I stopped talking, there was a question about transportation for a grant that they were gonna offer for going over to South Haven for a science project. And I was going, and before I could say it, a nice lady sitting to my left said, well, you think the, the district would pay for the transportation? I'm going, yes. Cause I'm sitting there going, why are we asking you for, and don't get me wrong, we appreciate all the grants. That's transportation. Why wouldn't we be doing that if it's for our kids? So that dialogue is a conversation that continues to where, yes, we do give them a budget and say, here's what we need you to look at. But come on now, if there's a need and we can meet that need with our kids and it's not going to strip this budget down to single digits, then that's what we're supposed to be doing.
I think it's, it's a balance too because some years, some years in the past, we haven't been that great. I mean, there's been years where we have gotten pro rations or we didn't get any increase and there's still, you know, at the staffing level, there's still increases that are negotiated, that are running, I mean, that cost money. I mean, just benefits alone continually increase, you know, so there's still an increase in that, in that stuff. So sometimes it truly is a balance and to the fact that we might just not have the money to buy whatever. I mean, if it, depending on like the dollar amount, and then it has to, you know, you have to outweigh, kinda like we talked about with the budget. Eighty-five percent of this budget is salary and benefits. So those are people that are working, you know, in the district. So that, outside of that, there's not a lot of room for wiggling without saying, okay, well, we'll, we'll do this, but now we're gonna cut a pair pro. And I'm just using it as an example, or now we're gonna cut a maintenance person, you know?
We don't, we understand.
So.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna give examples like that. By all means, I mean, obviously, hopefully, we don't need to, we can get at least a majority of our, our headcount back. The obvious of, we have a hundred and eighty seniors going out, and we have eighty or so kindergartners registered. You know, that may just be a loss of, of a hundred. But then again, we still have school of choice, and, you know, I think we're all, as a district, are gonna have to go advertising here, and.
Well, I guess you would people would wait till at least July first to see.
What schools do what?
Yeah, before they do, you know, before they sign up for kindergarten, like, you know, what are, what are we gonna do?
We do need to know, though, that there are schools in our county advertising right now.
Yeah.
We have advertised. So we have advertised, there is advertisements that have been out that we are open school choice, what we're limiting, when you can register, when you can fill that out. So I don't want you to feel like we've held off to put that advertisement out until July. So we have advertisements that are out, it's been on Facebook, it's been, like I said, in the district newsletter, it's been in the paper. I think Dana, you said you have, you know of a family that did register. So I know there are some coming in for that.
Awesome.
I wanted to show another.
I think it's twenty, twenty-one, yeah, that one.
Here's another. Table that I put together to talk about. So here again is the same categories that we've gone through on that summary and on that key, so you can follow that. But then what this does is it breaks it down, how much is salary, how much is benefits, purchase services. A lot of this is subcosts, our subcosts are in purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, other expenditures, dues and fees, and then that's your total. Then this also compares it, and I have this, this is a wrong label, I'll get this corrected, but this is for the preliminary budget of twenty-one, twenty-two. It compares it against the R two twenty, twenty-one, and it kinda shows you like a percentage change and stuff like that. But this is just, it breaks it down a little bit more to where you can see our salary and benefits. Our twenty, our twenty million right there compared to, you know, our twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollar budget. So that, that's what this break down, and you have this for, in Moradox, there's one for the R two twenty, twenty-one, and the preliminary twenty-one, twenty-two, that also breaks this down.
I thought, I thought this was pretty interesting.
It's a good way to view it.
Yeah, this is a really good one, I found this one very interesting and most informative, so I thought you guys would like to look at this one. I think this makes it a little bit easier to understand, make things a little bit more clear.
So obviously, we could be here on, I don't know how much more you have intended.
Yeah, I do, I have, so for general fund, the only thing I would need to know is which one of these you are comfortable with me bringing to you to approve on the twenty-eighth?
Expect the low.
Or a different one. I would, you could come back and say, no, I don't like either, bring me back something different.
I would say go with the low, and you can only go up from there, right? Like.
I like to go with the low, it makes me nervous that we're, we're adding a thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
So go, absolute worst case scenario, we hope, and then you can only move from there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as of right now, it's gonna affect, you know, just the general fund.
I think it's better to go from worse to better than better to worse.
And truly, it doesn't affect anything, none of our expenditures or income change.
Right, we don't have control over that number.
It's all just the dice on headcount and money from this, from the state.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, it's not like either, either option cuts anybody or adds anybody.
No, it's just the funds that we're able to do the other, the other stuff. So again, the focus on advertising for the bond. I mean, this, this isn't a want, this is a much dire need. So fair, fair enough to go forward on the, on the lower headcount assumption?
So that's what I'll bring, we'll do a budget hearing on the twenty-eighth at six o'clock, that's prior to the board meeting. So, and that's by law that we have to have that, so we'll kinda just go through similar, what I just did. We don't have to go as in, as in detail as we did now, but I'll just, you know, touch on those, touch on what that's gonna look like. And then that will be put on the consent agenda for the regular board meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Awesome.
So that's general fund, I have three more budgets to go through, but they are not nearly as extensive as, Jeff, I think is about to choke on his coffee. They're not nearly as extensive.
My bladder was so full, I didn't have any.
My bladder's full right now. I'm sorry, I did not mean to be rude by any means, I.
Everything funded.
Go food service, go food service.
Food service, so food service.
It's a fast one.
Food service, this is the, all the line items, different line items, here's the summary. So food service is very self-sustaining, you can see they're very healthy, this is their percentage of fund balance. Actually, I'm gonna bring up a different. Again, I'll ask you in the same format as the general fund one. But definitely here, their fund balance is very well. We actually get to the point where we need to spend it down, the state only will allow you to have three months operating fund balance left, or if you don't, and you don't, they, I mean, they give you time to get that corrected, which we.
Steak lunch.
Need to.
I was gonna say Little Caesar's every Friday.
Can we translate that here, any of general operating?
You cannot. And what they'll do is if we don't correct it, then they'll reduce the amount of reimbursement that they will send to us for meals. So we don't want that to happen.
So would this be equipment?
This is equipment.
Anything, I know.
Spicing up the.
Yeah.
So a s- a suggestion would be to kinda entertain some of the things in our bond that he was addressing with the, the hoods and stuff like that, and, and maybe some of these buildings?
Yeah, I think in the bond, I don't believe we had anything food service, because we had this money.
It's in the, each building's.
Projected maintenance.
Yeah.
Yes, well.
Renovations.
Right, but this one, we've already started with a plan just.
Yeah, so let me cut, so we're gonna, we need to add to it next, next year also, because with COVID and the lunch plan, all kids ate free. So we got reimbursement for all kids, and really, any kid could have came and got lunches, and we got reimbursed for that. Plus, they reimbursed us at a higher reimbursement rate than what we've had before that too. So this is another area where kinda, the money just kinda kept flooding in, which is great and a good problem to have, except for in the flip term, we have to spend that out, cause you can only have that three months. So what they're working on right now is they are remodeling the middle school cafeteria. And actually, I'm excited to see it, can't wait to see it. It's gonna be really cool, they're like changing the tables out, they're gonna be like booths, some are gonna be round tables, some are gonna be different. They're utilizing the stage to have some areas for kids to go up there, but they're painting it. But the decals and the signage in there is gonna be some, I mean, just the large Panthers, the words, the, I mean, it's just a really cool. Yeah, a really cool look, a really cool look there. So in talking with Laura, that's one thing too, once this company, once we see this, I'm like, this, maybe this is something that we'll do here for the cafeteria here in the high school. There's other things, previously, we've had to do a spend down plan in food service before, and we redid the middle, the whole middle school line is news, the serving line and stuff like that. We did buy some ovens this year, I think those went to Dunlap. But those other, like, the other kitchen lines, those are things that we can look at replacing. But we have to, this will be cited in our audit, so I know when they present the audit to you, it will be a finding in the audit that we have too much fund balance in food service. We're aware of that, we're trying to, you know, get it, and just working on getting that spent down so that we don't lose out on reimbursement.
Little Caesar's every Friday.
Yeah.
We will be the favorites of all time.
Hey, that'd be a good advertisement.
Obama's, Obama's food program would not like that. I'm well aware.
Can some of that improve the, some of the quality of the food?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, say again.
Like, could some of that money improve the quality of the food that we serve?
Oh, yeah.
Make it tastier?
Call, call, no, no, well, in a sense, you gotta call Michelle Obama and ask her.
Yeah, because there's a lot of regulating, so.
Yeah.
So for instance, the pickles that were donated for the staff luncheon?
Right.
They were mistakenly ordered, and they had too much sodium, so they couldn't give them to the kids.
I'm just talking about, like, I've seen some of the food in those bags that are in the pickup line.
Like fresh fruits and, and those things that are.
Right, instead of all the prepackaged stuff? Part of that was for COVID, though, they had to have everything prepackaged and couldn't have, like, served from. Well, they did have fresh food, some in that.
I think what they tried to.
So washable, washable fruit, but if you remember, we had, like, at the beginning of the year, I know some of the buildings, maybe all of them had the trays and everything was all on there and covered together, while they were all in the warmers. So kids were, you know, complaining about the cold foods, the fruits and stuff like that being, being warm, so.
Ew.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll get out of that, but see, I'm sorry, seems like we have a plan to.
Yeah, but we're definitely working, still working with Laura to, to definitely, to go that route. We're aware of it, it's a good problem to have, we just have to get it, get it fixed. And we kind of keep kinda getting in the, and unfortunately, we cannot drop the price. The state still, you still have a calculation to figure out what you have to charge for lunches. It's based on what they reimburse us from to what our full pay would be, and they have to be comparable. I don't have the exact calculation right here. So it's not like we could say, hey, we're just gonna give free lunch for, to use Don's money. It doesn't work like that either, unfortunately, so.
But we are free lunch in what, all the elementaries?
K eight.
Or K twelve?
We were K twelve this year.
Right, that was different, yes, that was COVID.
It's K eight.
But I think we're free next year, actually, for COVID too, I think it was extended through next school year.
I haven't seen that yet, but I'm pretty sure you can expect it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we're, we're free, but they're gonna, we're bringing up some of the regulations.
Okay, can we get off of food, because I'm ser- I'm seriously getting hungry.
Okay, any questions on this, this will, this again is a revision and a preliminary that I will ask you to approve.
Very summary, thank you.
You guys are making it easy, maybe I should put general fund last, and then you guys make it really easy here, I mean. Okay, so this scholarship special revenue. This is our scholarship money, basically, most, the majority of it is the jean scholarship. So if you're not aware, staff can pay a hundred dollars a year to wear jeans on Fridays. And a lot do, we put that money into the jean scholarship, then at the end of the year, we draw scholarships. I can't remember sixteen, maybe we did this year, a thousand dollar scholarships that we were able to draw out and give to, to seniors. So this is just the revision, it lasts this year because of just not being on campus and in class, people weren't here to wear jeans.
Fridays are gonna be wild around here, Little Caesar's and jeans.
So that's basically just what this budget is. Not a lot to question on that, anybody have any questions? See, I told you these next ones were gonna be quick. And the student service. This is the student activity funds, so these are like the fundraised funds for the different buildings. The, when they do their class fundraisers, to maybe go on a field trip, or maybe to field day, or band, or choir, athletics.
Popcorn artists.
Yeah, athletics, and stuff like that. So this is their accounts, and we, so none of this money either goes to the general fund. It doesn't go for any of the normal expenditures in, you know, a day. Now, have the elementary classes use their student activity funds for some supplies and materials and stuff? They have, if they've over expended their supplies, or they have a special project, or they're gonna do a Mother's Day, one thing, like a Mother's Day gift or something like that, yes, they might, you know, so I didn't wanna say, somebody say, hey, we've used ours for, you know, X, Y, and Z. But yes, different circumstances. But athletics, a lot of the athletic teams, you know, their fundraiser account sits here, band, choir, NHS, I'm trying to think of just all the different clubs and stuff like that.
Student council at middle school has theirs, like, there's a whole, there's a whole separate spreadsheet that breaks it down, and you can see everybody's balance.
So in this, so this is their money, you'll see this is a restricted fund balance, this is strictly all of theirs. So that's what we have there. So that again, a revision and a preliminary moving forward will be asked also to be approved. Any questions on that one?
I would just wonder why they would keep some of those at such a high balance?
Is there one in particular that you're wondering?
Well, like the elementary schools.
They, some of the elementary schools have dropped down this year because they didn't fund, I don't know that anybody fundraised this year.
We couldn't do field trips and stuff to spend it.
Right, and you couldn't do the field trips, right.
Like, see, so for example, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, like, for fifth grade, they usually go to Greenville Village. So they probably have all that extra money that they saved for Greenville Village they never spent. Eighth grade, they usually go, eighth grade goes on a huge field trip. I know that they use some of that money, and they, they bought all the kids a t-shirt that says Class of Twenty Twenty Five, cause they didn't get to go on their big eighth grade field trip this year. So all of those monies for those two classes, those are too huge that you leave eighth, fifth grade, that, that only leaves eighth grade. Those, those field trips didn't happen. So that's why those class, or those particular fund balances could be higher. I know that, for example, band, like I said, like, my daughter has an account within the band account. So if you think about a hundred students, and at one point, Olivia's band account was four hundred dollars. So every time she would do a fundraiser, Blake holds on to that money, so then if there's anything that she needs, band, oh, she's gotta get dry cleaning, oh, she's gonna go band camp, oh, she wants to sweat, sweatshirt for band, take it off her band account, take it off her band account. I never had to write a check for anything, he would just take it out, take it out, take it out. And so take that times a hundred students, that's why, like, maybe band would be high. Those are maybe some examples done, that, because at first, I, I mean, I actually called Gina the other day, and I was like, what is, what is, uh, R two? I'm like, sorry, I didn't notice this earlier, but. So I get where you're coming from, that's exactly, I was, I, I had the same question at first, but that's exactly why.
That's all.
Okay. The last document that I wanna show you, so this is called our L forty, twenty-nine. And this is what goes to the townships, villages, city, county. And this is setting our tax rate and what we are levying for taxes for the year. We have to do this annually. So this top, our operating is eighteen mills. And these townships in City Battle Creek are on a summer/winter split, fifty-fifty split. So you'll see, we're requesting them to levy nine mills in July and nine in December. And then down here for the Convis, Azariah, and Johnstone, it's eighteen just in, oh, I've got that wrong, sorry, I'll fix that before. That's zero, yeah, and eighteen here, so this would be zero, they don't levy anything in July, and they'll levy eighteen.
That's tough.
They'd be really shocked if they found out we were gonna levy, levy thirty-six on the party. Might have some issues there on that one, so I will correct that one. This, so that's our operating, that's what goes into the general fund, so that does help. That helps offset between that eight thousand one hundred and eleven that you get from the state. It backs out those operating taxes to, so that those equal the eight one eleven per student. This, the debt, is our debt mileage, so currently, we levy ten point six for debt, and that's where we're talking about extending that out. You know, if we do the bond, that would extend it out, but that's that levy. This again, half and half, and this again, I'll have to correct this, these, this column should all be zero for this group. And it's ten point six for their winter. So this is something also that will be approved at the, when we approve the budget.
Awesome.
So that's all that I have, um, in total, just a short little, you know, synopsis of what's going on in, in my world, so. Does anybody have any questions about any of it, or something that maybe you'd like to see in the future or at the next board meeting that I didn't cover, or that you're like, oh, I'd really like, you know, more information, or, you know, how about this or that, so, or if this, if you feel like you got, uh, good enough of a synopsis and summary of what's going on and with the finances and.
I will be scheduling a one-on-one, me personally, I will be scheduling a one-on-one with you next week if possible.
I'm actually out of town next week, but.
And I'm out of town this week, I'm out of town this week.
Okay, we'll get one, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, unless you need it before the, it could be Monday, the twenty-eighth, if you wanted to do.
Uh, if you're acceptable to that, I would be fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanted to, maybe we can connect, well, we could probably contact after this meeting and schedule something too, but.
Fair enough, and then, um, uh, for you, Kevin, which would you prefer, I mean, I have a couple of things that I would like to add that we currently don't have.
Yeah.
Um, some things that we've, um, kind of touched about in, in the board before, uh, or board meetings before, some different things, such as, uh, the, the Get Well Soon flower.
We do that, isn't it?
Deal.
So can I address that?
I won't be here.
Yeah, I think that falls under Gina's.
Oh, that's right, that's the G A S B.
Can I, so, there is not, uh.
That's, okay.
It has to be, you can have a get well fund, but, like, say it's from the board, I'll just use this group of people, right, say it's from the board, you each could put in whatever you want.
It has to be outside of this budget.
Yeah, and somebody here can hold on to that money and then do flowers, or when you do flowers, you can go collect from all seven of you every time you want to do that, that's one example. But the district can't hold that money, even if you donated it and gave it to us for that purpose, we still can't hold that money or purchase flowers to send to somebody on a get, get well, it, it sounds horrible.
Sounds like we had clarification on that already.
Every building I've ever worked at, the, the staff does that, and you have, like, a sunshine committee and they do it.
It is, it is sad, though, because a lot, we do get a lot, hey, can we do this for our staff, can we buy staff shirts, can we, you know, do lunch for staff, can we this and that? I mean, staff's important, right, I mean, they're, they're very important here, and unfortunately, all of these mon, all of the monies, our public monies.
Have to go to students.
Cannot, yep, and they cannot, even though the stat, without the staff, you couldn't.
Have a kick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it, it's really too bad and sad, and I feel horrible, because everybody always comes and asks me, and they're like, well, how do we do it, and I'm like, mm, out of your own pocket, or you don't, you know what I mean, or you just do words.
Absolutely, like, I mean, you, she brought this when I was at, at North Bend, when I was on the PTO. She came, she's like, you guys gotta take all of your money out of our general fund and you guys have to find your own place for it. So we had to do it, and it's been, this isn't.
And then you can do what you want to do.
This has been going on for years.
I know, it's not, and everybody asked me, and I feel horrible saying it, but there really just isn't, there isn't a workaround for it, unfortunately.
Have you had a chance to discuss with Angie and those two possible funding sources I brought you?
No, I have not, but I did go on the site, and I'll talk to you after we finish, I did go on the site and take a look.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very thorough.
Are you sure?
I think so.
Pause it.
I guess.
I don't want to cut you off again, I felt rude, I felt rude. Anyone else have any questions for Angie? All right, take a quick five-minute recess, please, thank you. I'm not the only one.
Tammy, is the live feed off for the recess?
Yep.
Are we muted for the, for the recess?
I can mute it. Are you gonna, like, say something?
No, I just, I just wonder, we usually do it for a recess.
Once again, thank you, Angie, for your awesome, hard-working presentation there. Uh, we will move on, three point oh five, school calendar. Um, Kevin, if you'd like to start us pertaining that.
Yes, I thought that I could actually pull it up, but instead, the, um, school calendar, school calendar.
Do you need to email it to you real quick?
Yes, Jeff, I was just looking for that email, I don't know what it is. To the board. Um, I will share that it's the calendar that the, um.
I just sent it to you.
Oh. See how quickly technology is working?
Of course.
There it is, thank you, Dan. I could, uh, yeah, the school calendar, uh, Angie and Trevor go in with, uh, opportunities to start with the calendar where it looks like it did last year. And a part of the negotiations with the teachers is that, um, of everything else, the calendar and wages are the only two things they can negotiate, that's left that they can negotiate. So we start with the calendar, trying to make it look like the previous year, and then, once there's a, uh, an agreement as to the number of days, then we have this part that I, I emailed to you, and there's a couple of things that are, I wanted to point out, and Angie happens to be here, so I'm sure she can help with, Trevor's probably watching going.
I'm sure she can.
It's, um, there were, uh, PLCs, professional learning communities, that the elementary teachers were going through, they were having those after school, and that by contract, they're going to have those. Well, there's days to where they now are going to go for the morning with the PLCs, and it's going to be six of those days in the calendar, it makes up three days total, which is professional development, which is different from what the secondary is going to do. They ask for this opportunity because it gives them more time to sit down with grade level, uh, sixth grade teachers and, excuse me, sixth grade teacher, fifth grade teachers and fourth grade teachers, so the K five have gotten that piece in and they're excited about it, which becomes a part of that negotiated piece. It is three days, isn't it, six days, three days total, three half-days.
It's our, the PD is five days total.
Five days.
And it was, I can't remember if it was, I think it was three days, PD two. Yeah.
It's five, uh, two-hour late starts.
That's it.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, well, I don't know, I don't have the.
Yeah, I'm talking about the.
Yeah, the two-hour late starts, we're talking about, it's five two-hour late starts.
And so those.
I'm sorry, six two-hour late starts.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, yeah.
And the six, no, that's right, and that six would make for three full days, that would have been for professional development. They, um, during that discussion, it helps with them with their, their PLCs. The, uh, calendar, which has the equivalent for the start days and the end days, which are, actually what I should do is just. Think I will.
I'm sorry, can we come forward to you?
Can you forward it to me, too, I don't have.
I will forward it to you, too.
Maybe you're the only one that got that.
I did not be the only one to get this, so you're sorry.
I got it.
I just sent it to you.
Because she sent it to me over the weekend, or earlier today.
Let me just plug it, put it on screen. So.
Brad, do you have it yet?
No.
Hey, what's that? What's your name, Randall?
Randall B.
Brad C.
There you go, you guys all have it now.
Oh, that's not.
There you go.
There. So the calendar, which was, um, questioned in August, starting the first student day is, student's first day is this half-day on the twenty-fourth. And then, you'll notice at the top that there are, uh, teacher days and student days that are counted on each month. And you'll notice that it goes to teachers' twenty, students' twenty. There's that holiday weekend, Friday in September, and then that Monday, which is Labor Day. And instead of going through this whole calendar, was there a specific question about the calendar itself, so that we can?
Did we do the spring break with Calhoun County with elementary matches up? Okay.
So is my understanding.
That's the most important thing I need to know.
Yeah, I think it's my, it's my understanding that, um, Calhoun Community College is not matching up with us this year, is that?
It moved back a week, spring break is one week earlier.
Yes, but it's my understanding that KCC did not do that, so, it, I, did you understand that as well? And if that is the case, what are the?
I think we didn't know for sure what KCC was going to do, so, I don't think we knew when we did this, but we went with, uh.
C I C, yeah. Okay, so we just, we don't know what the dual enrollment kids are gonna do yet.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct.
Get to that bridge, I guess, when we get to that bridge.
So the big, is the biggest difference was the PLC time embedded in the day, which I support for teachers.
It was just for K, just K fives.
The, uh, spring break, they were also trying to keep, well, we just said it, at the same time that everybody else in the county was having their spring breaks. And the last day of school, last day is the third, fourth of June.
It's the, it was on a Thursday this year.
Third, second.
Second, it's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday. And you notice that it's a hundred and eighty-eight days for teachers and a hundred and eighty days for students. So this is the calendar and the, uh, teacher agreement, that the board will ask for approval so that they can go ahead and put that piece in place, and Tammy, I think you mentioned the same thing about power school, that this first and last day also has to be put in there.
Yeah, we have to get those dates in before they start doing anything in that new year, it's gonna cause some issues.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, one of the reasons that, um, like, one of the reasons I really wanted to get this, a couple of reasons I really want to get this out, like, so people can start planning, and like, there's like the midwinter break, like, I know that we don't call it midwinter break, but it's in February. Uh, people like to, people like to, to pre-plan for that, but I, I know, and I brought this up before, the centralized calendar.
Yes.
Um, so when we have this, we, now that, once we get this in place, and I don't know who puts the pretty one out there, you can click on it, it says, print the district calendar.
Somebody makes it and then they give it to me and I go, mm-hmm.
Okay, so, if, the sooner we can get that put out on the district website, the, the better, because so many people would like to, I know we have to prove it, you know, in two weeks and everything. Um, uh, but, um, this is a really, I think, a good base for that centralized calendar that we're talking about, so that we could help manage multiple overlapping, um, I noticed one of the things, I don't, I don't, maybe I'm late to the party, but like, I love that we're still keeping conferences virtual, like, if we want to do them virtual, um.
The numbers were higher.
I love it, like.
Numbers were higher.
I'm all for virtual conferences.
Right, yeah.
As a parent and a teacher.
Um, I, like, yeah, I, I liked that you can assign, like, how you can sign up, I will say, um, I think I would like for the, and I don't even have a, I don't have a dog in the fight anymore, but I wish that the middle school would do the same virtual conferences like the high school's doing, because the way that they did them at the middle school, it was you, you reported to your pride time teacher, so then you had to schedule through your pride time teacher if you wanted to have it with the rest of your teachers, I think this ma, method, um, makes more sense.
I would also add that as we get to January and February, there are gonna be some parents who like coming in and talking with the parent and the teacher and having that interaction, so I'm sure that we're going to have.
Some?
Some, because, you know, when I bring my kid, and here comes TJ, and we're coming to the table to talk to the teacher, and it is, okay, you know, I'm trying to show I'm supporting and we're a team.
Yeah.
For some, it works better that way.
Okay.
So I know it shows virtual, but I'm sure there's gonna be some other connections there.
I'm sure each building, each, probably down to each teacher, will
Yeah.
do their own little, little thing, which I would encourage, yeah.
That's, sorry about that, we talked about that with the union, too, and they, they were under the understanding, too, that could be, you know, you might have some for that exact, yes, at one, but there might be a majority that will at least have a conference now that they're virtual, versus not coming at all.
So one of the things that I would like to put on for the board meeting is to use this as the start of a centralized calendar. Um, so we don't have, for example, a band com, a band concert on the same night as conferences, because it's hard enough if you've got a basketball game and a com, parent-teacher conference and a band conference.
Well, you're, yeah.
Yeah.
And we.
Yeah, I'm sure everyone tries to do their best, they're not, they're not always gonna be able to accommodate.
Well, we had, we've had band conferences and bachelorettes, and we've had a lot of that overlapping, and I think senior, and, and if we can pre, go through and pre-add a senior parade to this, and pre-add all of this, we can use this as a, as a stepping stone, say, and I know we can't do this yet, oh, this is where graduate students, you know, but if we use this as our basis.
Do we always have a district calendar with those dates on it? We just have to make sure people are actually looking at that at the same time that they're looking at their.
Creating their own schedule, correct.
But that's what, that's what we, I want to strongly encourage, and, because we, fifteen years ago, that's what was done, and it, we kind of got away with it. We used to, they used to sell, uh, the band used to sell calendars with the picture of the band on it, and it had dates for the entire year, and it even had sporting events for the entire year, um, you could buy it, and it, you could pay to have your child's birthday put on that calendar. Um, like, they did that back in the eighties, and they did it all the way up until, I mean, they did it through the two thousands, um, they did it for years, so.
Up used to sell replica calendars that had those dates on it.
Yep, so, um, it was.
So, Kevin, you're ready to approve, have this approved on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
So we can move that to the consent agenda?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you for, for doing this.
Thank you for. Thank you for sending it.
With the assumption that, that this would move on the twenty-eighth, or do we have a, um, a district calendar already ready, or are you gonna base it right off of this?
It's gonna be, this is like the start of it, and then everything else is added to it. So when Tammy mentioned someone sent it to her, well, send it to her and say, hey, can you, can you put it in there, um, for the district calendar so you can see them?
Without a vote, did anybody have any concerns with possibly not approving this calendar? You can take that. And go from there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Three point oh-six, uh, discussion of return to learn, uh, survey results. And I will.
Probably should have saved.
Do you wanna go ahead and present that?
Yeah. Put it back up.
So this is the, uh, the most recent survey to basically get some information for the board. Give us an idea of, um, what parents and, and students in general, uh, are thinking about next fall. So we're gonna.
So I didn't bring. Mic up here, so I'm gonna use this one.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, thank you. So, um, the back-to-school survey, I'm not gonna go through all the questions, but I am going to pull up the actual results. That were. So one of the questions was what schools does your child attend? And you can tell that all were represented with this survey. And I say all represented, not that it's all the students, but I will point out, this was eleven hundred and seventy-four responses. So if there was nineteen hundred and fifty, then we're s- close to a little over half, fifty-five percent or so. So, uh, this same survey, we will be sending out another one in August, because we wanna make sure that some of the parents who gave answers to some of these answers may change their thoughts by the time we get through July and start with how we're going to start school in the fall. This one was another one, it's, uh, what grade your student is be entering, and again, it's kinda all represented. So we didn't have any group not represented. This one I actually wrote on it because the percentage didn't show up when you first look at it. Uh, your elementary school student, K five student, attend in-person learning, five days a week for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And there was nineteen that said no, and it was that small area there. Um, I do not have a child assist in elementary, but then the fifty-one point eight percent said yes. So that is an overwhelming based on the number of students overall, whose names, oh, the names are also with the actual survey. The kids' parents put their kids' names in, so we know who those students are. Will elementary, will your elementary K five student attend school virtually for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Um, there was fifty, and it was yes. And then again, the split numbers with, um, I do not have an elementary student. So from nineteen to fifty, which is four point three percent, I think this is where some of the parents were going, if that is an option, then that's what I want to use. Where the previous question said, the previous question said, hey, um, is your student gonna be coming to school for in-person? And then there was a no, and then there's this, meaning that there's a virtual option. That's the difference in those two questions.
My question with that, those numbers being so different is, did people misunderstand it and think, like, if they had to go virtually, would they be willing to do that? Like, you know, if we went to a virtual mode, like.
That's why the fifty.
Cause really, they shouldn't match.
Yes. They should match, and I think your, uh, your thoughts is correct, because we started using the word virtual.
Uh-huh.
And that's when they're going, okay, either it is an opportunity, then I wanna use it, or that's not what was in the previous question. Previous question was, would you be having, having it in person?
And when we're looking at, like, every head is gonna count this next school year, like you said, you have the names attached. Could we reach out to those families that were no, but then yes, and say, you know, just clarify, what did you mean by this? What were you thinking?
And that's, that's the intent for the first week of August, which is
The next survey.
Two through six, that week of two through six, is to actually send out the survey before that, but being able to come back and call those, because we'll know by then if these numbers are getting smaller, where they really wanna be in person. Or there was a note made in my previous notes about the question about virtual, um, having a virtual option, and I was saying, we should have a virtual option, because we don't wanna lose any student. But by the time we get to this point to where, say, there's five or ten students, then I have to have a plan to say how we're going to address that and bring it to the board. For support.
I think for our next survey, we just need to make sure that the questions are crystal clear.
Yes, and we've, yeah, we could have had some more, but it was skeptic at the time. Um, nothing is gonna be determined until we determine it in July, so that's why we wanna
Is there any way?
Give ample time, but yet wait to kinda see what Michigan in general is, is gonna have for, for recommendations. Um, so at least this, we will know the third Monday of July.
Nineteenth.
So.
Is there a way that we could ask these questions without including the option, I do not have? Like, if you're, if you're saying, will your secondary s- six through twelve student attend virtual, okay? Is there any way we can leave out the, I do not have a secondary? Like, if this question doesn't apply, please don't answer.
Just your percentages are gonna be through the roof.
So there were, you could actually do the question to where if they say they have an elementary student, then they just go and answer elementary questions.
Right.
There's a way of doing it.
So instead of eleven hundred responses on every question, you would have?
Five hundred on one and six hundred and eighty on the other.
Yes.
Check those that apply.
Can I say something? I think when we were doing that, that meeting that we had though, I think the confusion came because, uh, I don't know who asked on the board, but somebody on the board asked if it could be on one page, so that like, you could see one page. You can't do that where you direct them to different places and have it all on one page.
I do recall that.
So the only way that you can have one page where like, I think what it was is so, can you see all the questions at one time? Is I think what.
Yes, yes, we can scroll. This way, this one, you could.
Do that by saying, like, if you're elementary, then you're gonna go to the solicitor questions, if you're secondary, you're gonna go to the solicitor questions. It can't all be on the same page.
Well.
To have it run that way. But this way is the only way that you could get it to run, um, so that they answer the question. So if you have, will your K five student be returning, if you don't have a K five, are you gonna say yes or no? Is that really gonna tell you, but that's why they had to have the.
Well, what if I have a, a kindergarten or a senior?
They're gonna make you do the two surveys. I have two kids, I have to do the survey twice. I, I fill out the survey twice.
They're supposed to do one per student.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
You fill it out twice, yeah. You fill it out for every student.
Okay.
But that was, and that, that was, I think, the only thing is if you wanted it all to where you could see all the questions.
I understand, yep, and that was my question, cause I, cause the one before was so confusing, because it was like choose your own adventure, and that was me.
Other than some little things, I think this was very cut and dry, it was self-explanatory. It, it got us a, a general idea of what we were looking for.
Which is what we were looking for.
For July.
This just, this, that's a weird nineteen fifty, that's weird.
Well, cause with our plan, that would make the difference of one teacher, two teachers.
Yeah.
By the time we get through July, that number may be even much, much lower.
Yeah.
And then this question, then it went to the secondary, which, uh, was the same thing, same question, uh, into, uh, the attempt, attempt secondary, for a six-twelve student to attend in-person learning five days a week for the twenty, twenty-one school year. And again, it was too small an area, but it was, um, uh, forty-six of those students, secondary, which is three point nine percent, said, um, that they were saying no, that they would not. Meaning, the next one, if it's on the same line, would be somewhere around forty-six percent. For the next question, when you're asking if they would attend virtual school, and that nine percent says yes, and I did not put the number down there, but nine percent.
That'd be over a hundred.
Yeah.
Roughly eleven hundred. Or a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yep, out of eleven hundred.
So still, both graphs, the numbers don't match.
Right.
Right.
But I think this is a more direct question.
See, and I think it's, again, as to, I think it's a question about virtually, like, if you're gonna offer it, then yeah, I'm gonna have my student go. But I see this question after the first one that said, would it be in person? Uh, I think that's another reason those numbers, uh, look that way.
So again, I think, I think regardless, uh, once the plan is put into motion in July, and every parent has the exact information of what they need to make their.
Yeah, cause then you can say choice A or choice B, which one are you doing?
Yeah, and they'll know how it's gonna look, mask, five days, no mask.
Right, right, I mean, it's, again, it's uncertainty, so.
Yeah.
But that was the, uh, the results from that survey.
Thank you.
So.
In that new survey, I mean, if they wanna send their kid to school and say you're wearing a mask, it's not like we're gonna say, oh, you can't.
You can't, oh, this is true.
You know, so they, that also needs to be communicated that they're not gonna be told they can't.
So maybe don't wear it, no masks, masks optional.
Right.
Some people got a taste for the virtual. Doing things and they're not gonna go back.
That's.
That's why I would expect the secondary be more high, higher in that.
Kind of our assumption, um, assumption or not, I know of, I, I personally know of a, a few sports athletes that decided to stay virtual to keep their exposure, uh, down, um, to, to be able to play their sport and hopefully not being in a quarantine process. So totally respectful, but, uh, at the same point, uh, I think, uh, I'm gonna say a high majority of our, our teachers will easily explain that they are not virtual teachers. They did not go to school for virtual teaching, and, and it's, it's been a very trying year, so, um, we are, we are a public school, we're not a virtual school, and at some point in time, we have to get back to, to public school, so. We'll see, we'll see what, uh, the news and the government, Michigan brings us in, uh, in approximately thirty days and and we'll see what, uh, what kind of a plan we wanna do for getting our kids and teachers back in. All right, nothing to do there. Uh, three point oh-seven, discussion of policy thirty-three sixty-two point oh-one. Um, uh, what we have here is, uh, um, this policy was, was brought to my attention uh, on a recent, um, concern. Um, I have spoke with, uh, Trune, again, our legal firm, um, I have spoke with them on, uh, this matter. And there's some, uh, some recommendations, and not really necessarily a, a s- a certain one. Um, he's actually given us, given me three recommendations to bring to, to you guys. Um, the incident in hand, um, is either one, I'm sorry, let me start over. Either one, we can enforce this policy. Um, if we wish to enforce it, then we can bring up other conversation of recent actions. Um, two would be to eliminate this policy. Um, uh, from, uh, from Ray Davis. It's, it is kinda misleading, um, for interpretation, which a lot of things addressed and, uh, verbal behavior and so forth is taken. Um, the next would be to basically scratch everything out and in one way or form or another would be, uh, all staff and board members will act professionally at all times. Again, how do you take that under interpretation? So, but it was, uh, it was advised by legal to, to bring it to you guys, and essentially ask, uh, what is the board in general like to do with this policy? Um, so again, we had a, we had an instance of an administrator has resigned, um, stating, uh.
An administrator, not resident assistant.
Excuse me. Administrative assistant has resigned, uh, specifically stating um, allegations of, um, behavior from a board member.
And, and this is, this is our policy.
Correct, this is our current policy in place.
You know, I think interpretation on this is, is huge, you know, so, you know. Somebody could say something to me, I wouldn't take offense at all, they might say the exact same thing to Brad, and he might, might have a meltdown, you know? So I mean, how do you define what is threatening behavior consisting of any words or deeds that intimidate a staff member? I mean, that's
Yeah.
ambiguous. And, and so if we cancel this and, and put in a policy that's just as ambiguous, I don't know if we've done anything, you know, I think.
So it is, I mean, with, uh, I think society in general right now, unless it's something physical, anyth- anything verbal is, is under interpretation.
Yeah.
Um, how that, how that, how that person takes it.
Meet you at your car and hurt you, you know?
So in the case of that threat, if we take this out, is there anything in place? Like.
We have.
If you look up the definition of threat, it's a statement of intention. I mean, you, you have to really think about intention to inflict pain, injury, damage, or other hostile action on someone for something done or not done, so.
This, this, this policy to me is, is very ambiguous. I mean, exactly, I, I'm just gonna, to add on to what Tim said, I mean, like, and Sarah, I'm gonna use you for an example. Like, Jeff, you called me gimpy when I was walking to go to the bathroom, and I'm, to me, that's, I'm like, whatever, I, you know me.
Limpy.
Limpy, but what, like, maybe Sarah, maybe that would have hurt her feelings. So we, as a society, I, not me, but we as a society are a bunch of sissies, and we need to toughen up. Like, I'm not saying that. and we need to toughen up, like, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that how I, that's how I feel. So I think this right here, that's how I feel about this.
I, I do like Sarah's point, um, we gotta have something, because I mean, bullying is real, physical threats are real.
But.
You know, so I, I don't think we can just, it's nay it. But I honestly, I have no suggestions on how to put a, a, a level of, you know, just some kind of.
I, yeah, I, I feel like this is so ambiguous.
Yeah.
And so, like, open to interpretation.
Yeah.
Like.
I don't know how to fix that.
Well, I mean, physical threats of harm, that's pretty, I think the, the wishy-washy is the psychological well-being, because nobody can really measure that, right?
Right, and that's what I'm trying to say, there's no way to quantify it.
Right, but if I, you know, vote no on something that Tim wanted to pass, and he's like, I'm gonna punch your lights out, you know, then we don't have this policy anymore, and he just gets away with it.
Yeah, or if you say miss.
I know, right, I took Tim's seat, he's gonna beat me up after me.
He's gonna call him and stew out or put your name on a list.
Yeah.
But I mean, does anybody, I, I think we're all saying the same thing, but does anybody have a way to fix that?
So the unfortunate part is, is, I think we're, we're actually dealing with two things at, at the same time. One, we're, we're, um, we're discussing the policy in general, and another, we're addressing the, the situation at hand.
Maybe we should split it to two.
So, that is perfectly fine, so let's start with the situation at hand. So, everyone kinda knows.
I didn't think you, when I asked you on the phone today, you said you weren't gonna bring this up till the twenty-eighth meeting.
Bring what?
The situation.
We brought it to tonight's meeting.
Okay.
So we have a situation, a staff member has resigned due to allegations of a board member. So that's kinda where the second part fits in, is, is either we need to decide whether we want to enforce this policy that we have currently in place, or we need to do something with it.
Well, don't you first have to find out if the allegations are factual or not?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, because Jeff, if I'm gonna be, if we're gonna, if we're taking, like, if we're, if we're being honest, a week before she resigned, I was on the phone with her, and she had, she told me she was gonna resign because, for a different reason. She told me she was gonna resign because of you two, and what you two had done, so. Yes, and what she, what she wrote in her letter of resignation is one thing, but what she told me a week before is a completely different thing. So, I think she at one point was very angry, she was very angry a week before, you and Kevin. So, what she, what she wrote in her letter is one thing, she was very angry that you went over her head to get your kid to play baseball, and that Kevin supported you on that. And she was, she had her letter of resignation ready to go a week before, and she had told me the week before on the phone, because I called her and I said, I thought you said that Jeff's kid couldn't play baseball.
I, I think we should be careful not to.
But I'm just saying.
Fair enough to not bring my kid into this.
I know, I'm just saying, but she, but you're saying that she resigned because of Dawn, but that's what she told me the week before. This is what she told you, what I'm saying is, like, we can't put her entire reason for resigning on Dawn, I think it was, uh, it couldn't, it's not just one thing, and I did talk to her the week after, and she said, you know what, it's not just Dawn, it, it was, there was a lot of it toward Dawn, it, it's not a hundred percent that, so we cannot say she resigned because of Dawn. Because I, I've gone back and I've watched meetings, Dawn calling Kevin out is not attacking Jackie. And I think we can all, we can all agree on that. She's, she felt attacked because she protects Kevin, but Dawn, in that meeting, was just protecting, I mean, was asking Kevin, was holding Kevin accountable for his job, and because it happened to address her position, she felt attacked, and it was nothing personal about her position. And do I know all of the history of every single solitary thing, of every interaction? No, I'm not gonna pretend. Just like I don't know every interaction that anybody has, all I know is what I was told by her, uh, like, so it's not, this, her resigning is not all in on, so to pretend that it is, is a load.
Well, I, I.
It's very, it's very offensive to me.
Okay, well, I would ask to direct the entire board. Okay, I'm going by legal counsel, I, 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 I feel a little directed towards me, I'm the unfortunate, I talk about uncomfortable situations, this is one of them. I was in- instructed by legal counsel to bring this to the board, and, and it's, what we do know is we have an email with someone resigning, specifically stating why they're resigning. That's, that's the evidence that we have, if, if we need evidence.
In that resignation, she says a board member, she doesn't say my name.
I never said a name, the only person that just said a name.
I mean, when there's an email sent out by a previous board member to all of the administration
And staff.
And staff members.
And then forwarded to all their staff members, by her.
I don't want their.
Which was not professional.
I, I'll take you back and just say, you know what, Jeff, go ahead, present the, present it to board.
Mm-hmm.
We can't, if we go into recess, we can't talk, if that's what you're.
I, I almost think this should be maybe discussed.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we can't, there's cer- there's certain, we're not, we're not ness-
Oh, it's hard, Doug.
Here's where I think it's tricky, because I think, um, you know, in my conversations with Jackie, I feel like, you know, she feels like her job was personally attacked, so under this policy, that could be interpreted as your psychological well-being, if your job is in jeopardy. But, because there are other circumstances, you know, we can't pinpoint it on that one thing. And that's where, you know, this wishy-washy policy, um, but I don't think, like, this one instance where we can't use this to interpret the situation would necessarily be the cause of eliminating this policy. I'm saying this policy doesn't make this particular situation.
Easier to deal with.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's the two different issues, and the policy is just gonna be the policy, you can't ever write in here a tight policy, you just can't. But, then we do have the issue that we're actually talking about.
So, the allegations are there. It's a matter.
Was also said that it was my tone, right?
It, I'm, I'm.
I mean, but that's part of this policy, if we're gonna talk about this policy.
Dawn, you don't have to take it out on me, okay, I'm just the president in running the meeting that had to bring this policy to the board.
Understandable, and I'm, I'm part of the board, and I'm just saying, if this policy is going to include somebody's tone, that, we need to all be aware, like, like, that's one of the accusations, was my tone. So, if, if in this policy, somebody can, because someone can just say, oh, I didn't like your tone, listen to your tone, I was in the, in that meeting of the nineteenth, you need to go back and you need to listen to your tone, and I did, I went back, I listened to my tone in that meeting.
If I was.
I did.
If I was gonna play advocate in reading the policy, I would say, if you use a preponderance, right? The fact that she did resign, that is kinda proof positive that she felt that she was, you know, that this policy had been violated. Right, because she resigned, if she, if she hadn't felt, you know, if it hadn't come into the psychological, the intimidation, or whatever it was, she wouldn't have resigned, right? She would've been mad, she would've said something, so she resigned, so I would kinda qualify that as preponderance, like, that's proof positive she was unhappy enough. But, are the actions of that individual, would that be, can we consider that substantial? Could we, could we consider the resignation what anybody else would've done? I don't see how we could do that, because that is just a, that's a personal decision. What her threshold for, for feeling psychologically intimidated may not be the same as everyone else's. So, just by playing advocate both sides, obviously, she felt like her job was endangered or psychologically, uh, bullied, but I don't see, with what I've seen with the interactions, which, like you said, I haven't seen all of the interactions, but I obviously was at that meeting, I don't think there was any intent to intimidate her. I didn't take the statements of that meeting as intimidating at all, you know? Um, it was definitely between a board member and an administration. Um, the person who resigned was not called out once, so, did she feel intimidated? I'm gonna say she did. Would I have felt intimidated? No. I, I don't think her response was justified, for what I know. There's a lot of things that happen in my office that I don't know. So, I guess just to paraphrase, I don't think we can hold anybody guilty for somebody else's reaction, you know, she made her choice, which, I was very sad to see that she resigned, I mean, she was such a team member. Um, but I don't think that makes the other party guilty, because somebody else felt intimidated. I would say if that board member was obviously intimidating, or that her intent was by anybody with a rational mind to believe that the intent was to intimidate, I would say we, we got a problem, but in my mind, I don't think we have an enforceable problem, for what I know. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, yeah, which, um, I would have to, I'd have to call Ray. Um, I was asked to, uh, perform an interview. Uh, we did fill Kevin and I in, um, the assistant to the superintendent, we did. Um, as of right now, Dawn's the only one that has those, uh, answers, um, that and our attorney.
The exit interview?
No. No, this is a whole nother interview.
Okay, Tim, okay.
That was before she resigned.
Okay.
This was after she resigned?
Well.
This is, this is what you.
Before she perlasted.
Correct, correct, you asked me to go get information, so, the three of us sat down.
And I said, I'm willing to show all of my emails and texts and interaction with her, you know? I feel like she's a big loss too, it was not her personally, it wasn't even her position. It was that there were two positions.
One hundred percent.
And going into our budget tonight, so in our future, if we have a question that's a budgetary question, is, I mean, it could be a staff member, it could, anyone hired in with the district, okay? Any employee of Penfield, if we as a board question when making budget decisions and things that, that we are responsible to look at, and we bring that up, is that going to be, you know, are we gonna continue to be, oh, they're threatening my job?
Well, I think it's a fine line that we walk, because as a board, our employee that we need to worry about is him, and his position, and we're most concerned about him, and then everything else trickles out onto, with budget, yeah, we have to look at items, but when we look at somebody's individual job, I think we have to be careful about that.
What she was questioning was the budget at that point, like, and she was questioning, hey, you had mentioned this before, and that's what, that's what the, that's what the question was, because I went back and rewatched it, um, to listen to tone as well, and that was what, you know, and it was the whole, the whole thing was, hey, this was the.
But I think the most intense part happened when we were in closed session, that wasn't on the video.
Which I remind everyone, do not go, you can talk about it in general, but do not go into detail of what happened in closed session, please.
Which we were not supposed to be in closed session, which we should apologize to our community for being in closed session.
We shouldn't have been in closed session for that.
I have recently found out. Yes. So, nor here nor there, again, I get to be the uncomfortable one to sit on probably literally fifteen hours of phone conversation, um, with this, um, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into detail, this is, this is, uh, this is a personal matter, I'll try to keep this personal, um, or confidential, um, so, I guess the, the biggest thing is, is I wanna, uh, reiterate the, um, you know, none of this is, is condol- or, uh, you know, none of this is, is, uh, acceptable, I guess. Um, we need to, we need to all be professional, um, we can most certainly, uh, dictate how people take us. Um, you know, we may refer to our tone, or the deep of our voice, or our facial expressions or not, um, but we can, we can alter that kinda stuff for, for people to perceive us in a, in a different way. Um, in a, in a nicer way. Uh, I just wanna, first and foremost, make sure that, um, that none of this is, is gonna continue to happen. Um, or will happen. And, you know, our staff and board members alike, uh, you know, are comfortable, and we're able to do what we need to do. Um, you know, we are board members, we're board members in a meeting. We leave this meeting, we're we're parents, we're grandparents. That's pretty much it.
So, legal counsel?
Yes, sir.
Asked you to do one of three?
Correct.
So, they're gonna decide to do either?
We don't have, we don't have to decide anything tonight.
I just wanted.
Could, we'll use it as a traditional committee of the whole. Um, after talking today, it was advised to bring it today. Um, again, kinda what we've been using committee of the whole is to, to break the ice on, on subjects, and we all get a, a week to ask any questions or do anything before making any action, this, in this case, we get two weeks. So, um, so again, there's, there's two parts to it, one is, is the allegations or the, the situation at hand, whether we'd like to take action or not. Um, ultimately, if you guys, if you got a chance to read it, ultimately, the, the board would vote to either, uh, dismiss of office, um, if there is one, in this case, there is one, um, or nothing, vote it down, do nothing, take no action. And then the second part that would have to be addressed is the policy itself. Obviously, if we wanna keep the policy, then there's no action to be done. If we wanna alter it or amend it, um, we have to take action, and then obviously, if we wanna remove the policy, um, we would take action to remove it. I would say out of the, the, uh, out of the two of removing or, or, um, rewording or amending the policy, unfortunately, we're, we're talking about this at the, at the same time of the situation, but the, the recommendation actually from Trune is to dismiss the policy. Um, it creates more open book for misinterpretation, kinda what Tim just wrapped up on, or, or just spoke of, excuse me. Um, I think, uh, almost word for word from, from Trune was a, gives an opportunity for someone to, to bring a complaint, you know? So, I just ask what we think is the best way moving forward to know and to let our, um, and I'm gonna say our staff, because I, I mean, the, you know, the Penfield staff to know that they're, um, you know, they're protected.
That's what my concern would be, like, where's the accountability if this policy is removed, so, I mean, any staff member, I mean, would they just, you know, work with law enforcement if there was a threat, if this didn't exist?
That's a, that's a very good question, again, um, I, I'm sure Ray probably touched on that. Um, but I, I can honestly say probably fifteen hours of conversation with, with that man in the, in the past couple of weeks. Um, I don't, I, I don't recall the answer.
Okay.
So, I will. So, I will, I will ask him what the, uh, alternative is.
That may be a good segue to when you look at, do we wanna look at Trune's policies for the schools?
And again, I kinda touched on it earlier, this is, this is a, one of the prime examples of I Call For Help, which is our hired legal counsel, and he has to go to our website, go to Board Docs, go to, you know, take, take all those steps, find that specific policy, because he doesn't know what our specific policy is. Then he has to go to Neola to, to double check, then he has to go to M A S B to double check, and then back to our particular policy, and, and he kinda gives me recommendations at that point, like, look.
Did he recommend a, a rewrite of the policy?
Actually, his, his top recommendation is to remove the policy. Most school boards that Trune deals with, and I don't wanna say Trune, I wanna say it, at least, um, at least Ray, most school districts have eliminated this policy, because again, it's, it's kinda given that reason to bring a complaint, you know? So again, I just, um, I, I think Sarah brought up a, a very good point. Um, if you guys don't mind, let me touch base with him. I have a, probably a twelve-hour drive on Wednesday, I'll have plenty of time for a phone call. Let me call him and, and see what his advice is for what it, if we eliminate this, what do we have obviously to protect from racial, sexual, physical, emotional?
I would think we would have other policies that cover some of that.
I would like to assume, but I've, I, I don't know right off the bat.
I'll do my due diligence as a board member and, and try to look at the policies.
I appreciate that.
Before then, um, it's, it's not like we just have one policy on someone feeling threatened, or, you know?
No, cause there's.
And that might be why Ray recommended to remove this one, knowing that there were other ones.
That's, I just wanna know, there's a not to fall back on to cover some of that, because.
Yeah, and, and Ray's a very smart man. I mean, I don't take that the wrong way. Ray knows his, his stuff, so, I mean, we do have, you know, that's mostly staff, dress code, grooming. So, I mean, yeah. Yeah, so if you guys don't mind, um, think about it, ponder it. Let me call Ray, let me call Ray on Wednesday.
I mean, cause it's very narrow for us to think of this policy just in this one situation that we're in right now, cause there's so many things that this covers, and I think of in today's world with threats online and things like that, and if we have nothing to, you know, people get very brave behind a computer and say things and.
And we actually have a, uh, we just, actually, we just discussed that in, in, in March as a Neola update, was the fiber, uh, cyber threat.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, so again, we have, uh, I'm like, guess right around five hundred policies?
Yeah.
So, that's what Ray's for, that's, that's what Ray's for, so, if, if you guys don't mind, let me get with Ray and touch base with him and, and just make sure I can answer your question accordingly, and, and make sure what we have on a, on a fallback, or, you know, or maybe we choose to just keep it or not. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Any other questions or any? All right. Back to the agenda here, all right. Uh, four point oh one, comments from the public. Do we have any public? Thank you. Uh, five point oh one, comments from the superintendent.
I have no comments tonight. I have all words. Yeah, you took all my words, bro.
You took all my words? You always have something. Uh, six point oh one, comments from the board.
Um, just wanna welcome Brad.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and then, uh, say thank you to the Athletic Boosters for a fantastic second annual first bingo. They did a wonderful job, they put on a great, great event for the Athletic Boosters and the Penfield Ultimate Party. Um, it was a very successful event, and on that note, I hope that all of the chaperones are safe as they are with all of the students at the Penfield Ultimate Party right now, and I hope they're enjoying themselves, and I hope they get at least a little sleep.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, my turn. Um, mainly the, the number one thing I wanna touch on, uh, that was a very good idea that's been brought up, is what do we do from, with the comments from the public? In a board meeting, uh, we are not able to comment, or it cannot be addressed as a question, whatnot at that particular time. They have their, uh, allotted time, Penfield chooses to use the rough three minutes. So, what happens to those? Um, I have sent an email, I haven't got any response. So, I encourage you guys to give me a response on what would you guys like to do with those? I would like to personally, I would like to put them in our committee of the whole, um, as just an update of what, what have we done? What have we done with, uh, Mr. Vitoman in the, in the junior football? Oh my God, I feel so bad.
The grading.
Savannah, thank you, I am so sorry. Savannah in her, the.
I don't think we're area math and science center.
Reevaluating our.
Waiting system.
Our waiting system. So, um, and, and I honestly, more for, more for the public. I mean, you guys can, you guys can ask me that kinda stuff at any point in time, but, um, I, I think it would be maybe a good addition to maybe the committee of the whole and just, we don't always have, have comments from the public, but, but we have a couple, and.
We should do some.
So.
It's not a good place where comments go to die.
Exactly, exactly, and I don't, I don't think a single one has gone, gone dead, but, but a chance for, for Kevin or I to, to update on, you know, what the, what the district or what Kevin.
Public sees, sees something move forward.
Yeah, so if you guys could shoot me an email, text message, anything on, on, uh, whether you guys support that or not, and we'll start, we'll start doing something fun like that in the, uh, in the meetings and just kinda update everyone. For you guys, budget, two weeks. If you guys have any questions, um, Angie just said not next week, she's gone, but any questions, let's get those out to her. You're here all week this week?
I'm not, but you can still just email me and I'll check them even next week.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So get those, um.
It's six o'clock on the twenty-eighth, just wondering, right, for that budget hearing?
Yes, yes, so the hearing beforehand is, is basically for us. We will have a quorum, we will be talking, so it will be, uh, in meeting, but the, the meeting itself will not, I'll call that, I'll have to call that to order. We'll have to roll call, but then we'll start our actual meeting, Pledge of Allegiance, all that stuff.
What's we need to get to on the calendar?
At six thirty, we still need to change that. It's on the district for the.
Twenty-eight.
Correct.
That needs to be changed, it still shows twenty-first.
Correct. Uh, next Monday is our Debbie Stare training. It will not be viewed to train for us, so. If you guys wanna come watch us learn, board superintendent relations, come on in here. Um, it, it's, it's still an open meeting, but there's no sense in videoing. So, we have that, um, we're gonna get with, with Debbie, um, tomorrow, and make sure. Her preparations for the last time seem to be before five days, before the, seven days before the meeting. So, just to touch base with her, so. Anybody, anything else? All right, as always, I thank you guys. Brad, thank you, sir, welcome. Got any questions, shoot us a message, um, email, text, S O S, pull the pig's tail. Whatever you need, but welcome, thank you, sir. Hopefully, we'll have our, uh, seventh board member back here soon. Really need him back here for, for help and participation. So, I thank you guys, um, I motion to adjourn this meeting. You guys have a great night.